All right, so we're gonna be doing exam review and final review and review of you of all these things we kind of outlined, we want to go over. So you know, our blood neuro restory, a little bit of EKG refresher. So we have requested by kind of make a study guide on these, so we can kind of develop that. All right, so we'll start with blood at least. All right, do you want to create a study guide from scratch, or do you want to adapt study guy from previous semester?
Scratch.
All right, so let's go to scratch here. Let's go to study session. What's going on? So let's go to say session, let's make another one here. It's called, let's make a Google Doc docs. Yep, so I'll put this one as study guide. Development, right? Okay, let's fit this here. Let's go ahead and let's go blood, right? And that usually works in Microsoft Word, but doesn't work here. Let's put insert a horizontal line makes it look fancy. Right, it's put some like that zoom all part of my screen also. All right, let's close this also. Okay, all right, so blood. So what do you have to know about blood? What comes to mind? So we got compatibility. Okay, so this also can become come down into complications of blood, right? All right, complications of blood administration. So compatibility is called an ABO incompatibility, right? So do you recognize what's what's the cause of this complication is a clerical error, right? Someone didn't get their RN license, or they got their RN license, they didn't pay attention to the blood lecture, right? So that's a way to, we want to make sure that we are compatible with our blood products. Okay, the clerical error mismatched blood product matched math, mismatched blood products, right? All right, we got more friends in the room. That's good. All right, so we can think about, so we can talk about compatibility, right? Or do you want to talk about the overview stuff first? So this, let's film, let's come back to this one. All right? And we'll come back to the different incompatibilities. What's compatible with what? Okay, so we'll come back to that. All right, so complications. What else about blood do you need to know? Good, so I kind of classify as administration, right? So administration, what happened and how to administer the the blood. Okay, so the different steps for for it, and then the complications if you do it wrong, right? So that's something to consider as well, right? Because if you do it wrong, you don't have, you're like, you don't have the right fluids, right? You have to have the right IV set. You have to have SP independent double check. Okay, so there's those things that fluid, what are the fluids again? Mm hmm, NS, and then what happens if you choose the wrong fluids, right? Wrong fluids. You also have to make sure independent double check, you're like also checking. What are you checking when you're doing that? You're checking the compatibility, right? What else are you checking?
What's the difference between typing cross and typing screen?
Typing cross is where you're just looking to see if they are what blood type they are, right? So type in screen is where you're screening the blood product, right? So you're you're taking the blood product you're actually going to give your time, and you're screening it with the with the patient.
And that's not in within this?
No, that's that's beforehand. Okay, I think I said that right. Someone correct me if I didn't. All right, so anyways, we have independent double check compatibility. And what else you checking on double check?
Patient?
Right, patients part is pretty important. That probably be under compatibility. Okay, what else? No, you don't, you're not allergic to blood usually.
Isn't that you have the?
You are allergic if you give the wrong product.
Blood things number or the MRN number to make sure it matches.
Symptoms for the diseases?
No. No, but that's a good point is like types up here, types of blood, right? We've got blood, blood or RBCs. We got the platelets. And we have the plasma, right? And plasma has its own components, right, etc. Okay, but as far as administration, you want it when you're doing independent double check, you're making sure that the IV site is good, right? He is good, so it's greater than a 23 gauge or not greater than, and you want it less than technically, you want it bigger, right? You want a big IV, big IV, right? So 22 gauge or bigger. Not 24 gauge because that's 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 smaller. So that's a little confusing, but you know, is the PIV is good? And what else you checking on that blood product? So that is not what? Good, not expired. Okay, because if it's expired, we're going to get complications, right? So complications, wrong fluids, expired, and then what we say PIV too small, right? So 20, 24 gauge, etc. 24, 20 gauge and high, 24 gauge and smaller, be more accurate, right? What happens then? Can hemolize, right? So wrong fluids, it can hemolize, it can it can pop, right? Or it can create, it can get smaller, not be functional. So that's going to lead to the cell rupturing and you get what?
Well, the reaction, the hemolytic reaction.
Not a hemolytic reaction, hemolytic reaction happens with ABO incompatibility. No, calomia, right? Every cell has potassium in it. So if they all rupture, as you're giving it, you're just giving a bag of 300 cc's of potassium, right? So especially if it's also expired, because they probably popped then too, right? Or they're even more fragile. All right, so hyperkalemia as well. Okay, and then what else? So PIV too small, also hyperkalemia. Okay, so they're popping, right? So if you want, you can put the rationales on here, so it makes sense, so you can kind of get the reason why, right? So that's going to help you understand what the the method, right? So All right, so then steps and then there's also administered as far as like the amount, I don't know, there's because there's such thing as MTP, it's massive transfusion, right? Some tips and tricks here, you're going to check the the chemistry, right? Check the BMP, right? After every Q4 units. Right, because otherwise it can get infusion of all that, that not precipitate precipitates out, but all the preservative, right? So infusion of preservative, right? You're looking for hypocalcemia. Blood product. All right, that can lead to a low calcium level. Okay, you're also checking your work to make sure that it's it's needed, right? So like administration, so indications are you can put it up here as far as indications. Indications for transfusion, right? When did you do? Why do you do transfuse somebody with packed RBCs? The RBCs, and when they're low, yes. Less than seven, right? Or massive bleeding.
It's because that's in the blood to stop clotting, right?
Correct.
Once it goes in the body, it's still kind of worse on the body to
Yeah, you can't take the preservative out. You can't filter it out. So the preservative is going to bind the calcium in the body too. And we might need to replace calcium. Right, calcium, and we check the, what else do we check? We check the CBC. That's the whole reason why you're giving blood, right? Check the CBC, see if more blood needed. Okay, so those are the administration steps and RBCs indications for PRBCs, anemia, massive bleeding. And then other cool facts about it, that it's a three to one relationship, or one to three, depending how you look at it, right? So which ones which, which one's bigger?
Or one different matter for three.
Yeah, or you said you can do vice versa, right? Or hematocrit, it's a hemoglobin is three to one. Either way, it's that's just math, right? So it's a one to three relationship. So the hemoglobin seven, you expect them to be to be what? 21. Okay, so anything else unique about RBCs comes to mind?
Polysithemia?
Uh, you can get polysithemia, but that's which is when you have too many RBCs. But we were talking like transfusion of blood, not really, we're not going to be doing that, right? But that is a complication of what?
Like sickle cell?
Sickle cells is called sickle cell anemia.
Whatever.
So it's under respiratory, right? And we have asthma. And we have COPD, and we have complications of COPD, and complications are polysithemia. So that's where you get polysithemia at, right? One of the complications of of COPD, right? So the complications of COPD, just to fill in the blanks here, what are the complications? COPD exacerbation, what else? Death, that's complication of every disease process, unfortunately. So we can, I think it's been more of a symptom, right? If you're talking about symptoms and diagnostic tests, right? So you're going to have ABGs, you're going to have respiratory acidosis. And really, I would kind of separate this into emphysema and chronic bronchitis, because they're different. They're like, you guess you can have overlap, but I'm not going to test you on overlap. It's like, oh, I got you. It's a combination one. No, it's going to be, it's one's going to be, I'm going to make very clear with emphysema or COPD era, sorry. Or or a chronic bronchitis, right? So which one has respiratory acidosis and which one has hypoxia on their ABG? Good. Bronchitis, right? Versus respiratory acidosis is emphysema, emphysema. Right, for both COPD exacerbation, but if you talk about chronic bronchitis complications. So I would probably separate this, I don't know, you can separate by sign and symptoms, then do one of each, or you can do kind of separate side by side, right? So you can develop this either way. Okay, so chronic bronchitis gets polysithemia. Why does emphysema get it? Malnourished? No, our emphysema patients are malnourished.
Yeah.
So why would you need more RBCs? And polysithemia, because your oxygen is low due to hypoxia, right? That's it. Okay? So yeah, due to hypoxia, they're going to get polysithemic. Okay, they're getting their RBC counts can be actually be high. And their ABG is going to show a PO2 less than what? 80, okay? 70% is your diagnostic test for COPD, right? So so PFTs, right? So polar function tests that we do at FBB1 to FEC, right? Is less than 70%. Right, if you know that what that is, FBB1 is how much air you can blow out. That second, or you can blow out. And FEC is how much air you can blow out. So if the score, if the final is out of 80 points, and that's how much you could blow out, right? There you can blow out. And you, and in one second, you take the exam, or in 90 minutes, you take the exam, how much could you could you get, right? So that is going to be your test score. Okay, so that is your test score is FBB1 out of FEC. So less, so in one second, these guys, the obstruction in their airways, it's difficult to get the air out. Right, so it's going to be reduced. They didn't study, they didn't come to today in person or on Zoom, okay? Total, yes. This is where on the vital capacity kick, what is vital capacity? Which do these processes develop are concerned about body capacity? Good, myasthenia. Okay, which other one? No. ALS is very, very slow, whereas myasthenia gravis can, if you can, if you forget to take your meds, you have, someone gave you magnesium or calcium channel blocker, or someone gave you an anticoagulant, something had made you have an exacerbation of your myasthenia gravis. You have a complication of what? An MG crisis, right? So that's, that's always, why can't we just call it AE? We can't. And that's just what they, what they thought. The neuro guys are in their own separate worlds, okay? Doing their own separate thing, calling, you know, they call a hilly surface, a calliculus, right? They go, look at that calliculus over there. It's like, it's like decassate into the right lane, so we can go check it out. Okay, so yeah, so complications of myasthenia is an MG crisis, and then where are we getting here? How do we know, right? So what are the diagnostic tests, right? How do you know? They're in crisis, right? You're going to check their vital capacity, right? So check vital capacity, right? Vital capacity less than what? One liter, right? Or 20, 20 per kilo, okay? So the same thing for NIF, NIF less than or greater than 20.
It's like, it's technically less than negative 20, but it looks like more than.
So if it's greater than negative 20, that's bad, right? So a good NIF, just so just a reason, right? So a good NIF is neg more negative. Right, negative 21, negative 30, negative 80, right? Negative, negative 90, right? Right now, you can really pull like it's a sentence parameter, you can, you can pull a big negative pressure, right?
That makes sense, yeah.
All right, so that's diagnostic test for this, and then you can just also put down, this is also for which other disease processes? MS, maybe? Yambrae for sure, right, is also for GBS. Yambrae or GMR. Okay. So complications of G, that's not really complication, it is, that is, that is the complication. Yambrae is unique in that it's usually a one time event. It's rare for someone to get yambrae again twice in their lifetime. It's usually a one time deal, whereas myasthenia, you have it forever, right? Just they have CHF forever, or you have CKD forever, or you have COPD for forever. Or you cannot get, you cannot recover from that. You don't recover from myasthenia gravis, but you do recover from yambrae. Right, but the complication is the, or the diagnostic test, right? Is you're going to check VC and NIF, right? And then treatment, we're kind of getting off track here. I think, I swear we'll go back to blood compatibility. Plasopresis is second choice. Good, so IVIG is first. I always misspell plasopresis. Plasmo for you to think it is, a pharesis, all right? It should be pharesis. All right, so yeah, so that's, that's, you know, IVG, plasopresis. Usually you give steroids for the other disease processes, right? Steroids not indicated for this one, right? But for the other guys, it is. So what are the other guys? All right, and what's the other one? Yep, good. So MS, you have multiple sclerosis, multiple sclerosis. Right, and the treatment for a complication of it, right, complications are MS crisis, right? It could be an acute exacerbation, but they they call it MS crisis, right? And the treatment is steroids, IVIG, and plasopresis. So you can see there's, they overlap in that fashion. If someone has a Parkinson's disease crisis, there's no such thing as that. Well, there is, there is on off syndrome, but that's a bad example, like Alzheimer's crisis, you don't have an Alzheimer's crisis, right? And you don't, you cannot give steroids, IVIG, and those things, because that these, these guys here are to stop the autoimmune response, right? If we talk about like the causes of myasthenia and, right, the causes are very similar, right? They're autoimmune in some fashion. Okay. We put some more stuff in here too, like whether it's peripheral or central, right? Whether it's attacking the central nervous system or the peripheral nervous system. Autoimmune attack against what? What is multiple sclerosis attack against? Where? Mm hmm. Right, so that's the causes, and then you can think of other things, right? You can say due to, sometimes we don't know, we have no idea, like Parkinson's, we have no idea what the reason is. It's not autoimmune, but they have no idea what it's what's causing it, right? So these guys highly used due to smoking, and what else is due to? Eskimo favoritism or cold weather, right? Low vitamin D. Okay. Yeah, it's a recent infection, so usually Epstein-Barr virus is like always there. What's that? That's more yambrae, right? In myasthenia sometimes too.
Yeah.
So yeah, so they, it's an autoimmune attack also. So what I got, what's the format I have over here? So let's just put this one here. So autoimmune attack, right, against Myelin sheaths. And where? And the PNS, and those are having to be called the Schwann cells. Schwann cells, right, due to not smoking or cold weather, but due to what? Recent infection, right? GI or respiratory. Right, that's most common. Okay, and then what about the other one? NG. What's different?
Cells like the five strange cells who attack
Mm hmm, so it's against the neuromuscular junction. Why can't I hold the right arrow? It's not moving. Okay, that's frustrating. All right, so it's against the neuromuscular junction, neuromuscular junction muscular. Okay, attacks the junction itself, the citocollin receptors, it also attacks the inside of the junction, the machinery inside the tyrosine kinase, right? That's why the diagnostic tests for it are, you know, you're looking for antibodies against NMJ, right? You have anti Musk, and you have anti citocollin asterisk, or citocollin receptor, right? Okay, against the receptor, against the machinery for the receptor. Okay, so that's the, it's a, and that's also recent infection. It's usually a strep infection, remember correctly, right? Okay, but that's respiratory. That makes sense. So that's kind of the differences there. And again, you, for anything you want to know, the what it causes, the symptoms, diagnostic tests, the treatments, and then the complications and interventions. Sometimes more, other ones have more complications than others. Sometimes some have like no complications, right? Or very few complications. Or very few treatments for that matter, right? Like an Alzheimer's disease just has four or five meds and is done, right? Whereas Parkinson's disease has a lot, and myasthenia, and then multiple sclerosis says, hold my beer, right? Because it's a ridiculous amount. Okay, all right, so let's go back to blood products. Okay, so ABO incompatibility, that was, we're going to say, we promise we come back to that. What's compatible with what? So how do you know what's compatible with what? Look at, so if separating the PRBCs, right? For PRBCs. Right, look at what? Look at the cell you're delivering, right, or and the plasma of the patient. Right, you can memorize the chart, that's fine, that that may help you, but if you look at, you kind of think, well, I'm, what, what is the patient's plasma have inside of it already? And will it attack the cells I'm giving them, right? If the cells I'm giving them are AB, right? And that means the cells have A and B on their, on their surface. Does their plasma have anti A or anti B, or both, for that matter, right? Which plasma has both? Oh, oh, has no cells, right? No, sorry, no antigens on its cells, so it forms antibodies, what it doesn't have, right? So that's the idea. Okay, so look at cell you're delivering, and the plasma of the patient, will it attack it, right? So that example would be what, right? Giving, let's say we're giving, oh, AB, giving AB cells, right? That's type AB blood to someone who is type B blood, right? They have antibodies against what? A, anti A, right? They will have a reaction, right? Right, so you can spell it out, and you say, well, you know, should I give, then you can think of negative, positive, or positive, negative? Which one's safe? Which one?
Give negative to positive.
So negative cells don't have the, don't have what? Don't have RH, right? And positive blood, bloodied people don't have anti RH, because they're positive blood. They have the, they have the antibodies, they're, they are not going to attack it, okay? Don't have RH, so it is safe to give to who is positive. So that example would be, let's say it's type A blood, right? So type, so I'm giving, giving type A blood, someone, right? Type A negative or positive blood? You type a negative blood who is type A positive. Right, they have anti, they do not, they do not have anti D, right, anti, sorry, anti RH. Because that would, if they had anti RH, they'd be attacking themselves already, because positive means that they have a they have the antigen present, okay? So which one is it? Which is safe? That is the negative to positive. So vice versa, positive, negative, if I give someone who has positive cells, like A positive blood, because someone is A negative, that person is A negative, they, you the tricky thing with RH is you could form the antibody, you may have, you may not. But we're not, we're not experiment facility, right? So we're going to make, we're going to avoid that, okay?
The complication of giving a positive to a negative is coagulation?
Yeah, if they have the the anti RH. So if the person who's A negative has anti RH, and you give them cells that have RH factor on it, they're A positive cells, then you could form, you could have an ABO incompatibility complication. Yeah, so the symptoms of that, what are the symptoms?
That's the one that's like back pain.
Mm hmm, back pain, and they get, they're peeing blood. Right, it's called a hemoglobinopathy or hemoglobin in the urine. Okay, and it's a widespread clot, widespread coagulopathy.
And this is, that's a good question.
Mm hmm. So that's going to clog everything. The lungs are going to have trouble breathing. Right, it's like, it's almost like a PE that the Jews gave them, okay?
Can I give them a stroke?
Yeah, PE stroke, all the things. But the kidneys are going to get clogged first, and they're going to start getting pain. We'll learn on Monday what costovertebral angle pain is, right? That is that the, where the coast is and the vertebros meet, right? So the coastos are the coastal is the ribs referring to the ribs, and the vertebra is the spine. So that's where your kidneys are, so they have back pain right there. Okay, so that's the, that's the worst complication is going to happen like right now. It's going to be a bad complication. Okay, so the treatment is, there's no treatment, you can't, you can't treat it. All right, you can maybe give them fluids, try to wash it away, but it's, there's no way to fix that. No, because it's an immune response, it's not an actual clot that's forming. Okay, so ABO compatibility is important. That's why we do the administration steps in the right order. And we're independently double checking that it's compatible, right? That's the right patient, and it's the right blood. Okay, so come back to them. We can talk about thresholds for these as well. So these are like thresholds here. So we kind of, kind of have it built in there, but these are the thresholds for when you just like, when do you transfuse platelets?
But sorry.
Mm hmm, when bleeding, all right, that's MTP.
It's one of a big number, right?
No, but the important thing is hold anticoagulants. When less than 100K, right? But when, when, when you actually need to give platelets, right? So when bleeding massively, let's say, I guess a better way to say this versus when bleeding less than 50K. So they're bleeding, and the platelet's less than 50,000, they're getting platelets, but they're, when not bleeding. When you give it, it's less than 10K, right? It's all, that's, they'll let it go all the way down to less than 10K. Okay, so over here, you can say like complications, right? When hemoglobin less than five, that's someone who can get a MI right then and there. That's the danger of anemia. Anemia has like, it has symptoms, like you're fatigued, cool, you're white, you're pale, cool. But and you're actually going to have cool extremities, but you're, but when does it actually kill you? Is when you have an MI, when the hemoglobin is less than five, right? Also, when you get up and you get syncopal, you have an oxygen, you're brain, and you fall and hit something, okay? So anyway, so we've got platelets, that's the threshold here, is to hold anticoagulants less than 100K. So it's not just anticoagulants, but it's also anti-platelets, right? Platelets, plate to eat. Right, so what are the, what are anti-platelets, and what are, what are those? Mm hmm, so aspirin, clopidogrel. I don't think I've given others, right? And then what are anticoagulants? And warfarin. Right, and what else? DOAX, right, so those are 10As and your dabagatran specifically. Dabagatran. All right, so heparins, we've got a few other friends of heparin, right? We have the low molecular friends, right? So they have lobinoxaparin and fondiparax. Paranox, fondiparax. Okay, so those are anticoagulants, okay, that you would then definitely hold, because that's 100K. Right, because it's easy to say, hold less than 100K, right? But then, do you know what that means, right, when you're there in real life? It's like, you know that statement, but can you apply it? Can you recognize on a med profile, oh, thank God, aspirin. That's, I give aspirin everybody, it's, that's cool, but you realize it plays for less than 100,000. So that's what makes you a safe nurse, and that, I'm testing if you're a safe nurse, could you, can you recognize that? Right, because anybody can memorize that, right? Say, which are, what are the reasons why you, when do you hold platelets, or hold medications here, right? All right, so plasma albumin, we don't really talk about much, we'll talk more about albumin with MedSAR2, and like the thresholds to give albumin, and it's not a low albumin level, right? It's not low blood pressure either. A PCC, we talked about, right? We didn't talk about cryo, cryo's next semester. And there's other factors you can get as well. So let's put PCC at the top, actually. After FFP, right, that's just straight up plasma, fresh frozen. Okay, a PCC, when do you give PCC? Reversal, right? For all anticoagulants. So why anticoagulant bleed, that's GI and intracranial, which you know about, right? That's a significant cause of hemorrhagic strokes. And hemorrhagic strokes. Okay, that's when it's time to give PCC, if someone's massively bleeding. Okay, and then we can talk about reversals up here, what's the reversal for this, for these ones? In order, right, so what's the first one? E, what's the next one start with? Okay, what's the next one start with? A slash I, right, so those are the reversals. Mm hmm.
Like, so wasn't it vitamin K if you have, like, time?
Yes, so it is, it is time related, so K, and it's kind of slash FFP slash PCC, right? But yeah, because PCC is gonna be your, it's gonna fix it now, in like 10 minutes, you give it, and it's fixed, right? It just costs you 10K. Was last thing, spent 10K in 10 minutes. All right, so FFP, we can, we can look at a different angle, it's like indications, right, or thresholds is INR, and also bleed, right? Massive bleed. All right, you can also put down coagulopathy. All right, so especially vitamin, especially warfarin. Or if you have time, like, we don't want to spend the PCC money, we could just give them FFP.
Does a PTT matter for FFP as well, or not really?
PTT for FFP? No, it's INR. So, yeah, so good for monitoring. Since we talked about coagulopathies, right, how do you monitor heparins? Mm hmm, good. How do you monitor warfarin? INR, and then DOAX, don't care, right? So they don't usually, if you do monitor, you can, you can actually measure 10A levels, you can measure APTT as well, but those are the primary ones.
You need to know like the terms, like intrinsic versus extrinsic.
No, that's physiology. So we can put that maybe over here, under steps, and then double check fluids, MTP, so like admin. Right, so it's usually PRBC. But, one to, it's usually one to one to one, right? PRBC to FFP to platelet. In real life, it's gonna be like four to one, right? Because it's hard to come by platelets, it's hard to come by FFPs, right? Platelets, you need like six friends, six close friends, and you gather all their platelets, and put in a bag, and then infuse it. Right? All right, so that's the, that's the idea, when you administer, because you see like mass transfusion, mass transfusion, massive transfusion, like, well, which one, you know, that's, that's where the mass transfusion is at. Okay, all right, are you all blooded out, or do you still want to talk about blood? Because so there's ABO incompatibilities, and there's also the, the other complications you can get, so you get, how to separate them, inflammatory or infection, and I think it did inflammatory ones. Right, and then non-inflammatory, ABO incompatibilities, technically inflammatory, actually. I see inflammatory for immune, I think it's an immune.
In the quiz, it was called an immune response.
So ABO incompatibility is a significant immune response. I'll put that first, because it's, it's rare, it's first because it's serious, but not first because it's common. Oops. All right, so what are the other immune responses and non-immune? Or just besides ABO incompatibility?
ABO is the same thing as a hemolytic reaction, right?
Mm hmm.
There's like, yeah. Something about fever.
Good, so fever is rarely common, all right, so fever, right? You can just say complications, like steps to take. What's the, what are the steps to take? Stop blood, right, call provider.
Is it something where you slap?
No, you don't slap them. No. Because I was gonna slap you right now, sir.
No, the acronym, the acronym.
Yeah, the acronym slap is for extravasation. Yeah. All right, so, is it, not FI, that's DK, it's FIA, I think, allergic response. What's I? I think there's allergic response fever, and what are the other ones?
So the non-immune has to do with overload.
All right, so then allergic response, the signs and symptoms are allergic response. I'm not, I'm being esoteric, but, or what's the word, facetious, right? So, but it's, yeah, so, well, how do you know someone's had a fever, fever, or a response? They got a fever, right? So it's like a one degree elevation Fahrenheit, right, what is that in Celsius? So it's like point five-ish, okay? So, yeah, so the, and so how do you fix it? Anti-fever, right? So you can do cooling measures, or you can give them Tylenol, that works too. All right, allergic response, they got allergies, right? But they got like severe allergies, so they, they got the rash, right? Itchy, throat swelling, right? And then the treatment for that, for anything allergic or immune related, is steroids, right? Just like myasthenia and, and multiple sclerosis and Guillain-Barre. We do give steroids, but except Guillain-Barre was the exception, right? So it's treatment for, for that is steroids, and we give an EpiPen, because it's gonna bronchodilate, right? Because we talk about asthma, COPD, as far as our treatments are concerned, we give bronchodilators, right? We have bronchodilators, and we have samas and llamas, right, and we have right, and these are sympathetic mimetic, or they mimic the sympathetic nervous system, so they mimic epinephrine effects, right? Right, so like epi, nor epi. Bronchodilates, right? So it makes sense that we are going to bronchodilates, what's wrong, what's wrong with it? No. All right, so epi is gonna make sense, that we give steroids and epi, we can even give Benadryl, or if we're fancy, because we're not selling Benadryl, we're selling diphenhydramine, hydramine, right, that's Benadryl. Usually Benadryl can be first, epinephrine is pretty dramatic, right? You can even give it via the thigh, you need to, you can give it IM. But you do steroids and diphenhydramine are the top two things. Of course, the fix, the thing we do immediately is, is stop the blood. Okay, so fever, allergic, you got a hemolytic reaction, non-immune responses, we have got iron overload and taco and trolley, okay? I think it was I, FIA, because there's infections, right? There's no road, it's not gonna happen like right now, like, you're not gonna get it during the blood transfusion, it's gonna be happen a day or two, or when Hep C develops, right? How long does it take for Hep C to develop? 30 years. Yeah, so I'll see you in 30 years, sir. It's like, you're the one that slapped me, weren't you?
30 years?
That's actually a thing, so when we talk about Hep C next semester, you, you ask, did you get a blood transfusion before the year 1968? So, because back then, they, they just went back and forth, that's all they they didn't check it, okay? So, yeah, so infections, so that's, you know, and then more commonly, it's CMV, Hep C. Okay, so iron overload, what's the treatment for iron overload? And the cause of this one? How do you get iron overload with the blood? Too many PRBCs, right? So it's like 20 to 30, too many, right? Not like, only like five or six, okay? How do you treat it? You de-iron it, right? You order the dry cleaners. No, do you have, you take the, you have the deferoxamine? No, you de-iron it, right? That's iron, that's why it's called deferoxamine, right? Yeah, so we take the iron out, all right? Because it's gonna bind all the iron. I mean, the symptoms are just gonna, they're gonna turn gold, right? All right, and they're, it's gonna go into every organ, every organ can fail.
Is it like, you can swim, right, and their skin turns gold?
Their skin turns gold. Mm hmm. Turns iron shaded, rusty. So the heart can fail, the pancreas can fail, the kidneys can fail, all of it can fail. All right, and then taco and trolley, which one's worse? So trolley's worse, right? So this is, the symptoms are ARDS, you'll learn more about ARDS in MedSAR3, but what you know is you'll get severe respiratory failure, right? It's acute respiratory distress syndrome, it's severe respiratory failure, right? A severe hypoxia. Okay, and there's no fix for it. Okay, so that's why we don't just give blood to everybody, we let it, we say less than seven, right? So then taco, what are the symptoms? Crumbs, and what else? High blood pressure, right, fluid overload. All right, so fluid overload, and, you know, that's gonna be high blood pressure, okay? They can have edema, they can have pulmonary or dependent. Depends, and it's high risk, people, right, but causes giving more than one. You know, the PRBCs, right? Especially with who? CHF and renal patients, right? They are high risk for fluid overload, so we should not give them two units of blood. Are that 700 cc's of osmotic, the active RBCs. Okay, so the treatment, of course, we're gonna stop, but what, what do you expect the treatment to be? Good, diuretics, right? So you give diuretics between units, especially between units. So if they absolutely say, I want two units, no matter what, you're gonna say, well, do you want a diuretic in between? Right? To help out. All right, so that's non-immune responses. Okay, all right, anything else on blood? That wasn't clear? Okay, so what else was on our to-do list? Did I close it to cover? All right, so blood. Okay, neuro, we kind of did the other disease a little bit, we can go back to those ones.
All of them. Strokes and others.
So which one of these, myasthenia, or Guillain-Barre, or MS, do you want to go in more detail on? So, yeah, so Guillain-Barre, so you see, and causes, we want symptoms in here. Diagnostic says treatments, and then other interventions to consider, right? So what are the, so causes, we kind of took care of, right? So recent infection is pretty much it, right? And the symptoms, so what makes it different from the neuro disease, or what else, what are symptoms they have? So there's ascending paralysis, right? And it's, it's the only ascending paralysis out there, except for one that's been eradicated in the 50s, and that's polio, right? There's one country that still has polio, because they don't believe in vaccinations. And there's also one city in America that doesn't believe in vaccinations as well. So that's, it might, there might be another ascending paralysis in the next five to 10 years. But it's the only known ascending paralysis in the last, you know, 20, 30 years at least. All right, so ascending paralysis, right, so starts in toes. Okay, and then also, it causes a lack of reflexes, so it's a reflexic. Reflexive, reflexive. Okay, so no reflexes. That's a classic thing for, because like ALS has reflexes still, right? So why does it have no reflexes? Because it affects sensory nerves too. So we come up here, we talk about PNS effect, so it affects the, what, motor, sensory, and when we say motor, that's technically the voluntary part, and like the muscle part, and ANS, right? So we can, we can group this together into motor, right? Ascending, we could put sensory. A reflexic, and also probably gonna have some anesthesia as well. Peristésia, anesthesia, that's what happens when you lose your sensory nerves. Peristésia, anesthesia. And then we have ANS, right? They got instability. Right, so heart rate's up, down, zero. So that's why they can die from Guillain-Barre. Okay? So, and of course, bladder incontinence and such, right, with ANS. Well, you have motor stuff, right? So that means it's also a diaphragm, right? That can lead to respiratory failure. Okay, so that can lead to respiratory failure, which is kind of your complications over here, we're checking frequently to see if, to see if respiratory failure, to see if respiratory failure. Okay, and that can then lead to them being, requiring to be put on, and being intubated, and it could take about three to six months for it to recover, and they might, and they have to then recover all their function, right? So interventions can last for three to six months with trach peg. But usually recover function. The PT, OT, et cetera, right? They, it's gonna be a big journey. Okay? And what else? So treatments, diagnostic tests, there's not really many diagnostics, you can check to see if they have the, the antibodies against those infections, but anything else I missed about Guillain-Barre? The idea is, you know, if you're doing study groups, is to do this, like, let's talk about Guillain-Barre. Because we just did Guillain-Barre right now, right? And that took us five minutes, right? And with me doing it, that shows that I know it, right? But I want you, I want you to be doing this, like, on a whiteboard, it's like, we're doing Guillain-Barre, and you just go through Guillain-Barre. And then someone, and everybody has a closed note, and then open your notes, so you forgot about the no reflexes. So it's add reflex, so you're not gonna forget it next time, right? I'm also getting input from the group too, I'm not just like, oh, look what I can do, right? You guys on Zoom can chime in too, and you know the answers. All right, so that's Guillain-Barre, all right? Any other questions on Guillain-Barre? Did we forget anything? Someone looking and checking my work? Because Mm hmm, that says it can last three to six months with trach peg, but usually recover.
It, like, I know you're probably not fast this on the test, but is it ever permanent, like?
If you die. It would be permanent. Laughing at me. No, no, it's, that, that's No, no, it's, that's the danger of it, is that eighty-five percent have full recovery, right?
For the causes, would we include the, I'm not sure if you had included that on there.
Well, if there's four of you right now, that means half of you, one, one half of you died. Okay, so that's the idea of the Guillain-Barre, right? So which one do you go for next? Multiple sclerosis is a catch-all, and that's really the one you should study last, because it has, A, if you don't know any other medications for it, then if it's not, and one of the other ones is that one, right? But also, B, it has all the symptoms of every other neuro disease, right? So you want to kind of figure out what the other ones are uniquely, right? And like myasthenia gravis is just peripheral and is just affecting the neural musculature junction, has no CNS effects, has no of those other things, right? Has, has no, no sensory involvement. It's only the motor fibers. Okay, like the same thing with ALS, ALS is only the motor fibers, right? But in the central, in the spinal cord. So it's only the motor fibers, so there's no effect in the sensory system, so they have reflexes, and they can feel everything. That's why they wanna, they usually pursue the physician-assisted suicide. Okay, so what do you want to go next? Okay, so diagnostic tests and then symptoms. So causes, it looks pretty complete, I'm gonna take the NMJ, like which part, it's, it's these parts here, right? We can also do like an ice pack test. Okay, so we don't do tents a lot anymore. So the flu vaccine causing, I cannot hear you. I'm open over here, and it's open over here. I'm not sure why I can't hear audio for those in Zoom, so if you guys have been screaming in pain for the last thirty minutes, I apologize. I'm not sure why I can't hear you, actually. Well, I'm not sure why the audio is not working, it's I'm able to hear everything here. Let's double check my work here, is test speaker microphone. Hello, hello? Yep, I can. So I'm hearing all the audio here, so it should be recording at least, but as far as the, otherwise it'd be really, it's like, why is this guy typing so much? Alright, anyways, so sorry, I can't hear you. If the flu vaccine is important, it's extremely rare, I kind of took it off, it's, it's not even, it's, it's, if the flu vaccine did cause it, they would not get it again. That'd be the, an exception. Alright, so symptoms of myasthenia gravis, right? So what are the symptoms? So it's fatigueability, fatigueability. Alright, so fatigueability, so that means they do what? Eyes get tired, mouth gets tired, uterus gets tired. Alright, so they get, they get fatigued throughout the day, right? Uterus is the strongest muscle in the body. Okay, so mouth gets tired, your eyes get tired, so this is, they get ocular bulbar. Or D's and orthostasis. Alright, so what is that? That is dysphonia, like you're saying? You're thinking dysphasia and dysarthia first. But diplopia, because you people are complaining that first, diplopia, okay? Dysphonia, and then they get to the diploplia, diplopia. It's for all of them, very much, it's a lot of them, okay? So diplopia, dysphasia, dysarthia, dysphonia, and they get orthostasis, right? Orthostatic hypotension. Okay, so those are, anything else with myasthenia, fatigueability? Occular bulbar weakness, and then, of course, they go to respiratory failure, right? Good, so you can see muscles waving goodbye. They get weakness, right? They get fasciculations. Especicity is the same word, and then they go to paralyzed. Okay? So that's respiratory failure, so that kind of goes over here as well, under, under motor, ascending paralysis. Alright, so it's progression like that, right? So it's the same diagnostic tests, we're gonna be doing, like, PFTs as well, right? Kind of put it there as well, but yeah, put underlines. Okay? So MG crisis is the, the one and only complication of MG, right? We can put down like causes of it, or the causes of someone going to MG crisis, same reason why someone has an MS crisis also, is a stress, right, of some sort, right? So, but what is, another thing, I guess would also be MS, would be non-compliance, right? Or they forgot, right? So probably should put treatment first, there's some meds with with this, so non-compliance meds are forgot, so what meds are there? Or they got anti-MG meds. These are, treatment is to promote acetylcholine. Promote acetylcholine and stop immune system, right? So we can put down ACH. Acetylcholine, let's put an up arrow here. Symbol. Why can I see symbol, table, image, special character, okay? I typed it, but then it's getting not catching up. Alright, so increase acetylcholine, so how do we do that? We give acetylcholinesterase inhibitors. Alright, if you can't visualize it, I gave a lot of images in the slides, so you can see how it's stopping the breakdown of acetylcholine, right? So it's not, it's making acetylcholine stick around for longer. Acetylcholine is used to cause the muscle to contract. Right, so your cholinesterase inhibitors, such as, we got one that's for, that's taken PO, one that's taken for NPO. What are those? PO is cortostigmine, and NPO is neostigmine. Alright, period. Stigmine. Mean. Okay, so those are the, the two go-to meds they're gonna be on, right? And important considerations is they take their PO meds around the clock, right? So I put that over here, maybe under interventions. Take PO meds around the clock. Right, otherwise they will get a crisis. Or, and also you take it around the clock and before meals too, right? Why not after meals? Or absorption? Or if you go in there like nine o'clock, you, it's like, why don't you eat your food? Okay, I eat my food, right? I eat my, I'm in my back kitchen, right? So you should probably give the medication before, so think I should chew, right?
Oh, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, so if you need the medication to chew, you should give it before they, so before they chew. Alright, so take PO meds around the clock and before meals, make it a crisis or won't eat. Okay, so back up to medications, we're decreasing the immune response, so that means steroids, these guys are gonna be on steroids at home, kind of like our, a late-stage asthmatics and late-stage COPD patients, they'll be on steroids. Alright, so they also are on steroid sparing therapy, steroid sparing. So there's like, what are they called? They're called calcineurin inhibitors. And they have some anti-neoplastic or chemotherapy meds. Which one? Yeah, that's the chemomeds, yeah. Alright, so those are the, the idea there. Okay, so MG crisis is the significant complication, is the only complication. Well, respiratory failure is a complication, but that kind of falls under MG crisis. Alright, so cause like, how do you know you have an MG crisis? What are the symptoms? Right, you have respiratory failure. So we can talk about respiratory failure here, or in, or in respiratory, but what are, how you know someone's respiratory failure? They can have hypoxia symptoms, and they can also have what? They have accessory muscle use, right? They also, like, feeling wise, they're gonna say, I feel tired, right? They have short, short word sentences. Okay, I guess they'll kind of be more under hypoxia. Okay? They got, what kind of symptoms? Yeah, let's see, we later, short word sentences, and they get KALOC, right? Lack of O2 to brain. They can do seesaw breathing, their abdomen's trying to force the air, right? What else? The neck, right? So the scaling and sort of clonomastoid get engaged, okay? And ironically, these guys, you're not gonna see that as much, because those things are weak, so that's why doing the PFTs is better, right? So let's move this down to asthma or COPD. Asthma, COPD's up here. Okay, so symptoms. Stress. And then what were the signs and terms of hypoxia? What is it? Oh, that's, that's later, so. Just to be complete, right? If you have chronic hypoxia, that's not so much a, that's kind of a COPD, like, like with COPD. Like with COPD. It's not really asthma, asthma is usually more, you get an asthma exacerbation, and then you have hypoxia, and you get better. You don't have like chronic hypoxia, like you do with some flavors of COPD. The mucousy flavors, one, the chronic bronchitis. Alright, so anyways, symptoms were what again for hypoxia? So wheezing is not a sign of hypoxia, but it's a sign of asthma. But what's another, like, hypoxia, like every someone, whenever someone's O2 starts dropping, you're gonna get these symptoms. Fatigue, yeah, you say fatigue, that's like, I feel tired, right, fatigued. Good, so S and S response. Okay, it could correct response, or it couldn't correct diagnosis, okay? So tachypnea, and then yeah, tachycardia. It's important, like PSVT or VTAC, or any one of those things, right? Your H's and T's basically. Alright, so anyways, tachypnea, tachycardia, and diaphoresis is pretty common. But yeah, specific to asthma, they got wheezing, and what else? You get chest pain, which is usually from the what? No? Coughing. From coughing all the time, right? You want to know that greater than two, you know, incessant, or what's the word, the consistent coughing is not getting better, is a reason probably call nine one one, right? Down here, we talk about interventions, important interventions are, you know, your PFMs, right? And, you know, their rescue inhalers. When to call nine one one. Right, then also other things, right? Yes. The salves are the rescue inhalers. Alright, so when to call nine one one, so PFM is what? Fifty percent rescue inhalers, not rescuing. Right, usually it's greater than two, two attempts, right? And still in, and still in red, yellow zone. Or they're not getting back up to where they, they should be, right? And then other things to look for is you have nighttime coughing, not getting better. Meaning that you're greater than two awakenings. Alright, what was the other two? So two puffs, two of those, and less than fifty percent, I think there was another two in there. Okay, so interventions, when to call nine one one, and avoid triggers, so I know what the, the triggers are for. A year? That's a little long. Nighttime. And greater than two times. Oh, it's called nine one one, it's like to go to your doctor, but maybe, I don't know. Alright, anyways, avoiding triggers, alright, so what triggers should they avoid? Danger, dander. Avoid danger, alright, I know. I heard danger, but avoid danger, what else? Avoid cockroaches and their poop, how do you avoid cockroaches and their poop? Alright, so you can put out traps. Right? Clean your house. So pets. Right, so they can be a low shedding pet, or they can be a hairless pet, if you like that thing. Can, can hairless, you can euthanize, you can not sleep with, right? They can be a separate room, etc., right? Indoor only, those kind of things. Okay, so dander, and then cockroaches and mites.
Salves with exercise, maybe?
So yeah, exercise, so let's put it here. The exercise, they should take, take their like a puff before. Okay? It's not really avoiding triggers, but I guess, I guess infection's always there, wash hands, right? That's always a thing, right? And also take your, take vaxes. Usually short acting. The long acting and the steroids, the ICS, those are usually to control you, alright, to control your asthma. Yeah, it's good, you would be surprised how many asthmatics smoke, okay, but you have to consider it. Alright, so dander and mites, what should they do for that? In their house, and what else? Air filter, good. Oh, clean your hose. Alright, so linen weekly. Clean your house, and then what's the one you said, filters, right? Epip filters. Okay, you get the little air purifiers and such. Alright, so there's good triggers and such to avoid, when to call nine one one is important things, and then oh, we got distracted, we're talking about neuro, let's come back over here. We were. We were talking about myasthenia gravis. We're talking about hypoxia, like they, they'll get respiratory failure, right? Well, would they have accessory muscle use? That's, that's why I kind of removed it from, from here, because they're not gonna have a lot of accessory muscle use, because it's gonna get fatigued, and you're not gonna be able to see it, okay? So what else? So respiratory failure is a good symptom, diagnostic test, they got some good diagnostic tests. Treatment wise, I've got these guys here, and then we talk about the side effects. What are the side effects? Good, so sludge BB, right? So it's not the anticholinergic, but these are cholinergic, right? So side effects, sludge BB is, is what? Pericardia and bronchoconstriction. That's why down here, we're probably going to, for these guys, we're gonna avoid, it's like, don't be an asthmatic and have myasthenia gravis, that's not gonna, not a great combination. Alright, so bronch constriction, alright? So with the, the connection there is that acetylcholine, you can either block it or not, or let it, let it, let it ride. So for respiratory, we're going to, I give, we're giving what kind of medications for respiratory patients? Inhaled steroids, but what about acetylcholine story? You're doing given anticholinergics, right? So that's why it's tough if you have myasthenia gravis, and you have that, you probably wouldn't use anticholinergic, you use the, the beta ones, right? So bronch constriction, so, you know, when you're talking about neuro, you can differentiate which, which meds, which disease processes use, or have, might have a side effect of sludge BB, right? Myasthenia does, which other disease process? Myasthenia does, which other disease process would? Alzheimer's, right, so we didn't talk about Alzheimer's here. So Alzheimer's, Alzheimer, no apostrophe anymore, unfortunately, alright, so causes. Why do I have it multiple times, this doesn't make any sense, alright, and then treatment down here, okay? So treatment is also gonna be. Are we promoting acetylcholine or are we blocking acetylcholine? We're promoting acetylcholine, right? So increase acetylcholine, same thing right here. It's actually acetylcholinesterase inhibitors also, so that's nice. Except these acetylcholinesterase inhibitors, when you take them and they go to your stomach, they don't go to the muscles, they go, they cross the blood-brain barrier and make their way. Into the neurotransmitters there, right? So that's why they unfortunately don't have all the same last names or anything, okay? But what are they? They are DRG, right? And mantin. Okay, so then, yeah, DRG, so think of what? The nepazil. That's what we're used to, rivastigmine, but then the other one's not, right? The other one's not, doesn't have antivastigmine, unfortunately. Is it galantamine? Cuz there's glitiramer, which is for both MS. Okay, alright, so galantamine, so those are DRGs, side effects are sludge BB, right? So that brings up the question, like, who has anticholinergics then? Parkinson's does. You wanna decrease acetylcholine. So let's put that here, we got, our treatment is to. Decrease and increase dopa, right? Decrease acetylcholine, we're gonna give anticholinergics. Right, so what anticholinergics do we give? Unfortunately, again, they don't have the same last name, so it's. So benztrabine. Right, hexyphenidyl. Okay, so, I spell that right? Google thinks so, alright, so that's the, those are anticholinergics, right? So the side effects of these ones are.
PE, yeah, all the opposite of sludge BB. And chew, and chew. I know, but I was just spitting it out.
You couldn't, cuz you have anticholinergics. Can't spit. Alright, so those are this, and the reason why we give these is cuz acetylcholine inhibits dopamine, right? And in Parkinson's, it's a cause is low dopa.
This, this is the substantia nigra one, right?
Mm hmm.
Do we need to know that or?
Yeah, anatomically, yes, and had, oh, dopa had substantia nigra. Okay, so the symptoms, we talked about those, but. Increase dopamine, so you wanna talk about the medications? Levodopa, carbodopa. I just put carbodopa first cuz then it's, I think that's the one that happens first, right, cuz it's, it's going to inactivate the peripheral breakdown. It's gonna stop the breakdown of levodopa, it's like his little, little chariot. It's also alphabetical in front of it, carbodopa, levodopa. Right, the carbodopa stops the breakdown, so like it can actually make its way to the, the brain, it's like every action movie ever, we're trying to get the, the prize to the other side. It stops the breakdown, so carbodopa. Stops breakdown, right? It also breaks down. Dopa, what am I trying to say? How'd I word it on the slide? It also, it leads to orthostatic hypotension because of that. It stops the peripheral breakdown of dopamine as well, so you can't, you, you want dopamine cuz dopamine is the precursor to norepi. Which you need to, for the S and S to squeeze, right? So if your carbodopa will be residual and it will also, you know, stop you from doing your, your weight, your ability to vasoconstrict and manage your blood pressure. That's one of those side effects are. Orthostasis, right, falls, cuz over here, they already had a high risk of falls. Mm hmm, so side effects are the NMS and on off, right? That's. Do they get hallucinations? So NMS is where you have, it's, that's neuroleptic malignant syndrome, that's where they get extreme fever, extremely. Okay? Mm hmm, so on off, they get the symptoms of their, their disease because, you know, on off happens. When med not taken, right? Or advanced disease. They don't have enough, you could give them all dopamine in the world, but they have like one functioning neuron, they can't really keep up. Falters the, the symptoms, so fever, achinemia, or altered, sorry, fever altered, right, leukocytosis, etc. Those are just symptoms of withdrawing the medication too soon. Suddenly stopped. Okay? Mm hmm, AMS, ultimate status.
Do, uh, do you wanna go over the, the rescue meds for on off, or do we not really need any of those?
We need to recognize them, yes. Yeah.
Ego team, mantadine and epaloidine.
So yeah, the fix. Is what? So these are the agents we give for. For that, and they're, and they're, really, their, their claim to fame side effect is the, the behavioral symptoms, right? I think this one, one's correctly, or the other ones, the dopamine receptor agonist, I think it's the same, they're, they're the same. It's cuz you have carbodopa, levodopa, you have dopamine breakdown or enzyme inhibitors. Enzymes that break down dopamine, you wanna stop them. And then we also have dopamine receptor antagonists, agonist, sorry. And that's these guys here, right, plus a few other ones, did you all see, like primary Bexall and such? Alright, we're, we're syphogenes, I'm one thinking of, anyways, those are, those are the ones that are, they, their primary side effect is. Risk take behavior.
That, uh, is that the mechanism of action for like anti-seizure meds too? Cuz like anti-seizure meds cause risk taking behavior?
They can, but anti-seizure meds are, they're usually suppressing the immune system more than anything. Alright, so yeah, so that's the, the fix for on off, right? And then dopamine enzyme inhibitors, we have two of them, what are they? Have alcapone. And tacapone, right? And then MOIs are given as well, okay? They are, but it's, MOIs are gonna study and psych, it's gonna, they're gonna be the same, it's nice. Okay, alright, so that's the deal with the, the meds for Parkinson's, right? Do, are you gonna, is your OCD gonna flare up if we don't fill out the science symptoms? There's no diagnostic test, which is nice, or not nice, but. Alright, causes, symptoms, treatments, interventions are, they're high fall risk and complications, where they're immobility, right? Okay, what else? Let's look back at our, or just in general. What's the consensus?
Uh, the signs and symptoms of Alzheimer's are, uh, amnesia, agonia. Apraxia. Epilegia, alexia, anosmia, anosognosia. Anosognosia, aphasia. Agnosmia. And after you have anosmia and aphasia, you have roughly three months to live. But you become bedridden and then you get all the complications.
So interventions are, it's complication. Alright, so immobility, what are the immobility complications? Lactatic. Lactatic. Right, you could also get what other kind of pneumonia, what else, what other pneumonia develops? Aspiration pneumonia. I think head to toe, so if they, brain wise, the brain's already not working, but that's, that's not gonna be a complication. You can get stir crazy if you're in a bed for a long time, but, but then going downwards, if you think of respiratory, right? So respiratory wise, they're, they're gonna get the pneumonias, right, other respiratory things? Not so much dyspasia, I mean, they will have though, that complicated, it's not a complication of immobility specifically. Good, PE, you might've got to it when you got to legs, right, that would work too, it's PE, D V T, right, which is V T. For being in bed for a long time, and then going down heartwise, the heart is, I mean, it's not gonna be great, but then keep going down, you got the. The, you get to the bones, the bones start breaking down, right? Bone breakdown, alright, and they have contractures, good. A muscle, alright, the bone breakdown is gonna, you know, collagen's gonna be leached out and that can actually form renal stones. That can lead to renal failure, but not UTIs, alright, and then GI wise, you're gonna constipation, it's like, okay, that's, we can treat that with medications, but. Any other immobility complications?
Uh, in your, in your previous student study guide that you made, uh, it said Alzheimer's can cause a stroke, is that just because of the immobility or is it because of the brain?
No. Yeah, it's mechanical. Good. So we have decubite eye. Okay, hapuse, hospital required pressure, pressure in your ulcer. Alright, so then, yeah, hapuse and then there's haps, hospital required pneumonias. And there's, there's been in the hospital for a long period of time, right, and then you have collapses and codis if they have a Foley for a long time. And then they shouldn't have a line for, for any good reason, that's usually only for someone who's in the hospital for a long period of time. With like an infection or they have a, you know, they have like an otomilitis from the hapu. Okay, so that's a good point with, with lines, when you talk about central lines, one of the central lines complications is a. A clapsy, which can then, how you know someone has a clapsy? Have inflammation and pus around the site and redness, and then of course, that can progress to a what? Endocarditis, good, and that would lead, how do you know someone has endocarditis? How do you know someone has endocarditis? It was like, it was like ten days ago, just saying.
Being honest. Uh, that myocarditis is tachycardia one, uh, so they have the chest pain and the, uh.
They wouldn't have chest pain unless it affected the aortic valve. So endocarditis will have, have a murmur. That's what I was, that's what I was getting at. And the other complication is it can, it can spread to the tissues, right, it can cause septic emboli. And that leads you back to, to strokes, right? So that's actually a great pathway to strokes, thank you, alright, so we have strokes, we've got types, right? You got ischemic, you have hemorrhagic, right, and then you have the large vessel. What's going on? Like it keeps switching back and forth, I'm not sure what's happening. Right, so yeah, so cardiobolic, that's gonna be, we're getting a septic, right? Septic emboli, there's other ones too, there's atrial emboli, right? Right, so septic emboli, that's from endocarditis, right? Okay, from a clapsy, question mark? Or. Endocarditis is always infective. It's redundant, it's like saying HIV virus, alright? Or hap pneumonia, it's like hospital card pneumonia, pneumonia, it's like, it's, okay, or hapu pressure ulcer. Alright, so yeah, so from a clapsy, what else can you, how else can you get endocarditis? Or endocarditis specifically, or. Good, IV drug use is the other big one. Alright, so going into strokes, right, so you have ischemic strokes and hemorrhagic strokes. Right, so ischemic strokes obviously are gonna be, those are the most common ones and. You know, ASCBD we talked about a lot, we also talked about diabetes and hypertension a lot, right? And which one of these also causes hemorrhagic?
That conversion.
But what's the most common reason? Hypertension, right? Okay, so large ischemic Alzheimer's and then hypertension can cause aneurysms. Okay, so those are your types of strokes, so what on strokes did you wanna talk about?
And, and we can talk about all strokes if you want. Uh, we can talk about the regions. Do we have to know the, like, what supplies the circle of Willis?
It just gives you a framework, so you know that that's, that, that's, that's, the circle Willis is where you have aneurysms that develop. But it's also a, a way to get collateral circulation, so you, and you have a chance for recovery. Right, it's diagnostic tests and then treatment. Okay? What's supposed to like typing is not. Alright? Alright, so anyways, what are the symptoms?
Of what, of a stroke?
Yep.
Yeah.
So B fast is a quick way to know it, right, so that we can separate it into the different vessels, right? So ACA, what's the other one? MCA. And the one in the base of the brain is called the basilar, right? Okay, so then ACA has what symptoms? Good. So you do bladder training for these guys, that's one of our fixes for it, so we can kind of combine them as far as how to, how to fix it. This can also go under interventions, right? The things you do for, for strokes, right? Obviously they have immobility, so those are the same. Right, but other things you would do is, you know, you work with PT, you work with OT, you work with speech language pathologist, you work with all these guys. Alright, so MCA, so well, let's go back here, incontinent, bladder training, for being wild, you can redirect, I guess, right? They also have what other? It's not really there, but it's, it's also to have a toxic gate. It's not really there, but it's, it's also have ataxic gait, right? Cause it affects the legs. Okay. So they worked with PT is learn how to walk again. Ataxic means you don't know, you, it looks like you're drunk. So ataxic is where you, it looks like you, you don't know how to do something. Like they have ataxia with Alzheimer's, like they don't know how they're, they, they look, it looks like they know how to make toast, but they're not making toast well, right? So ataxic is, it's, it's similar, but I wouldn't, you can interchange them. That's fine. Ataxic is, yeah, so ataxic ones, you, that's a good way to put it. So ataxic is you know how to do it, but you can't do it well. Or ataxic means you can't, you know, you're faking it, right? It's like, I know how to perform live in for sure. And you're like, you're, you're going downwards on the, on the, on the arm towards the fingers. It's like, no. All right. So PT, learn how to walk again, incontinent, bladder training. So there's like kind of fixes. Fix with PT, fix incontinence. Fix incontinent with bladder training, right? And so ataxic gain is usually the contralateral same or ipsilateral side. Contralateral, okay. All right. So I guess it wouldn't be legs, you wouldn't have four legs. Anyways, we have MCA. What's, what has the MCA? It's fast. So it's face, right? Speech, right? And also eyes. It's really face, right? Cause the eyes have what? You have contralateral, ipsilateral. Contralateral. Homotous. Hemianopsia. Okay. So that means the what? Same side or opposite side? The opposite side is what? What, what's, if someone has an MCA stroke, but which side? The opposite or same side?
The opposite side is cropple vision.
The opposite side is, is, is blocked or you can't see. Yeah. The cropping is of the, of the, of the, of the ipsilateral side. So you're, yeah, if you have a left MCA stroke, right, you're not, you're, you're the, the right side is going to be cut off, right? You're not, you're not going to see that side. All you can see now is the left side. Okay. They have contralateral vision loss. Okay. So then face. So how do you fix it? They got drooping face, right? I guess it's, it's speech right here is right. That's dysarthria, right? So you can fix that with who? With a speech language pathologist, right? And then risk of what? Aspiration, right? That's kind of under interventions down here, speech language pathologist, right? Aspiration. Right? PT for ACA strokes. OT with that in there as well. Speech language pathologist for MCA strokes. You need SLP for ACA? No, there's, there's nothing going on ACA that's going to affect someone's speech, right? They're going to be just fine talking. All right. Arms, that's going to be weak, right? You can fix, you know? And then it was, let's say contralateral ipsilateral. Right? To fix with PT, right? The drooping that can lead to drooling as well. Speech, eyes, anything else with MCA? Nice thing about this is it's the same for PCA. So eyes, this is separated down. So eyes. So it's ipsilateral eye movement. See eye weakness. Right? They look the same side. But the opposite side, vision loss is lost.
What's the term that we need to know for the vision cropping again?
That's the homotous, hemianopsia.
Okay. All right. I think I got confused. So what is the total vision loss called then?
Total visual is anopia. No, that's just the cortical blindness that can happen. This feeds the occipal lobe. So you could get blind, potential blindness, but it'd be on that side, on the opposite side, sorry. All right. So yeah, so eyes, what's another PCA?
But it's not like direct cerebellar. Right?
So the PCA feeds the what? It does not feed the, the cerebellum, it feeds the occipal lobe. Right? So thalamus, they have contralateral ipsilateral. Have contralateral weakness or paresthesia, right? It can lead to anesthesia or paralysis too. And total body pain. That's kind of paresthesia. Right? What, anything else with PCA? Recognition, yeah, that's, they can't recognize faces. That, that can be a thing with like on the hippocampus sort of. Okay. Anything else PCA? Mm hmm. Then Basler, that's everything else. That's, that's the most serious one, right? Yeah. So you think of ponds, you get the medulla. Right? So ponds, you're not breathing. Good, right? And you gotta be like your respiratory patterns, you have chain strokes, you have biots, you have all these different, various respiration patterns and then medulla, you have heart rates, respiratory variability. Right? And then they can even be locked in. It's, it's rare, but other things are the cranial nerves being affected. So that's ocular bull bar. Which we discussed below, ocular bull bar. Okay. Good balance.
If you have your scab, then you have quadriplegia and they're locked in, that was called.
Yeah. So quadriplegia can, can have because you're not having any kind of output, right? All right. So diagnosis test for, for strokes. CT, MRI, right? Which one's better? Right? Faster than MRI. And things about it is that you want to make sure what ischemic looks like, right? And what hemorrhage looks like. This is after 12 hours or so. To be normal for thrombolytics, right? And then white, it's going to be, shows up immediately. Other thing you do for stroke is to figure out the causes of stroke. I don't think we finished all the causes. Right? But you're looking for causes. So like the PFO, like on the echo, right? To see if a clot made its way from the leg all the way up to the brain. You do an echo for that. Echo will also tell you if you have an MI or not, or how bad your CHF is. You do EKG to see if they have AFib, right? Okay. Other things you do, you, you would do like a CBC to make sure the platelet count is good before you give thrombolytic. That'd be something to look at too. Good. So blood sugar is important thing to check before all these things really. Let's put it at the top here. We'll, we'll talk about BU on Monday and anything else. Okay. All right. So yeah, so that's the treatment. What is the treatment for, for a stroke? So we'll just talk about ischemic versus hemorrhagic. We'll kind of combine them. Mm hmm. So less than 4.5 hours, right? For this last known time well. Right? And then less than 24 hours, I do 24 12, those large vessel occlusion. Right? You can, you can pull out the clot. Thrombolytics. What are thrombolytics? Okay. And then you have to look at the side effects of those, right? And interventions or considerations, then he's what? You're going to check vitals, frequently check vitals frequently. Vitals and neuro checks really. You're looking to see if they have a complete, a side effect, right? Oops. Do you bother to check vials and neuro? All right. So what are the side effects? Bleeding, right? It's a 7% chance. Therefore, the other intervention is? Before administration, you do what? Good consent, right? Consent and you do it. There's little checklist as well. No contradictions. So the platelet count's super low. If their blood pressure is too high, right? You can't, can't give it, right? Yes. So angiotine is also their side effect. So platelet two, and then you can also look at, you know, recent surgery or other problems, right? All right. But BP too high is in something I would test on because it has, we're talking about hypertension already. So it kind of finishes the puzzle of hypertension, right? So BP too high, what is too high? So greater than?
Oh, is it 160?
So it needs to be, you know, BP too high, I see fixed to less than 180. Okay. It technically is 185, that's just how they studied it. And they got FDA approval on 185, not 180. They should have used the same number both times. That'd make it easier for us to study. Okay. So you gotta fix it immediately, right? If they're getting TPA. All right. So less than four and a half hours, given thrombolytics, we're giving TNK or TPA. Those are the side effects there. Let's put those together. Bleeding and that's including a hemorrhagic stroke. Okay. And the interventions before we administer it, doing consent, make sure there's no contradictions. All right. So BP too high, the platelets are, are too low. They had recent surgery and other, other things, usually age can play a role too. They had to be more than 18, less than 85. So there's other things in there too. Okay. And then for 24 hours, you can't be poked, too, you're bothered and they got to check vitals and neuro checks frequently. And then there's like a van assessment you do. Have visual problems, they have visual, let's say A, there's aphasia and neglect. But then otherwise, if they, it's like too late or it's been like 10 hours, everything's been too late, you can't do that procedure. What's the treatment for ischemic stroke? Yeah. Or let's just say treatment in general, like what treatment should they be on?
Keep their blood pressure at, like, at or below 200 or 200.
Good. So avoid, I guess, what's the way, do not treat, I guess. Better than 220 over one, is it 120, right? Do not treat BP unless greater than 220 or 120. Thrombolytics or C above, right? But otherwise for ischemic strokes, you keep it greater than, you keep it less, you don't treat it unless it's more than 220 or 120, right? It's permissive hypertension. Okay. And then what else? This is usually present for 24 hours. After that point, we're going to bring it down. Okay. I'll go over here, we have to fix the BP. That's where you fix it with the IV forms. All right. Otherwise, what else should they be on for treatment? Good. They're going to be an anti-platelets. It's something they might be on dual anti-platelets, right? Which is what? Aspirin and tuclopidogrel. Tuclopidogrel is a P2Y12 inhibitor. There are other ones out there. You will see the more like brilinta, which is the brand name, which is, that tagorlor, I guess, lost its patent like three years ago. So you're going to see a lot more of that nowadays because it's more effective than tuclopidogrel. It's the same class. Okay. All right. So you're on anti-platelets. What else do you want? All right. So statins. So the DOAC is only if they got AFib. Right? So you might be on DOAC. Statins and of course afterwards, we can control the BP. All right. Is that it for ischemic treatment? Or they need to be on VT prophylaxis as well, because they're probably going to be bed bound or they might have some bed bound situation. VT prophylaxis, right? So anticoagulants.
Do we need to know which IV meds to keep their blood pressure low at or not really?
I know. I mean, if you know that it's an IV catching a blocker, right? Nifedipine. Turn nicardipine, nicardipine and nifedipine is PO. Okay. And then what's the one that's PO? That's for aneurysms. Nimodip. Okay. That's the treatment for aneurysms for. To keep everything for hemorrhagic strokes, basically just keep everything normal. And BP less than what? 140 ish. They don't really, it depends, it depends on the type of hemorrhage. So it's a whole, they can't agree on which one it should be. They just say 150 and be done with it. But it's, you know, it's 140 to 160. Okay. So you bring down ICP, keep everything normal. All right. So that means the sugar should be normal, the O2, CO2, et cetera. Okay. And then what else can we do? My mouse died. There it is. Okay. It's back. All right. So I think we're, any other treatments we're forgetting? A ischemic stroke depends on the time, right? As far as like 25 minutes, 45 minutes, those, that's message three, we figure out the actual timeline of the stroke to make sure all those things are in place and, and such, right? But right now, if they know that they get thrombolytics and now they're on four tower and it's 24 hours later and what should I do or not now do, right? All right. So then anything else? Hemorrhagic, bring down ICP. Right? Hemorrhagic is, you guys talk about the types so much, don't aneurysms. What ICH is just. Aneurysms are subarachoid.
So yeah, like, yeah, like a, yeah, like, do we need to be able to like, I don't know, is there any delineation in like signs and symptoms between like a traditional aneurysmal and a subarachoid?
Yeah. So subarachoid hemorrhage classically has the, the thunderclap headache, right? That's classic for, for that. All right. So that's hemorrhagic and ischemic. As far as like interventions, like when you need a PT for ACA, who else needs help walking? Which is which kind of stroke? So Basler and who else? PCA, right? Help arm again, that's MCA, right? So that's really just to help their arm function and such, right? Whereas OT, what does OT do? It's, their function is to help with ADLs, right? So they could do, they do bladder training. With who? ACA strokes, they can work with vision, right? Vision scanning and. PT can also be a fall risk too. Right? It's like vision scanning. That's where they're making sure they're scanning their environment, make sure there's no clutter and such, right? So they can manage themselves. So that's who needs, who has vision problems? PCA, right? And MCA primarily. You can argue that, you know, ocular bull bar, they're going to have diplopia. Right? All right. So then. Alright, so then. But these guys definitely are losing half their vision, so that's a problem. Okay, so then bladder training, ACA, anybody else do bladder training? No, okay, so what else, other important interventions that would be done? So doing visual scanning, we're doing fall risk, who's a fall risk? So also MCA because of vision, right?
Yeah.
And so it's all the, all the above, right? But fall risk because of what? For ACA.
Just they can't, like.
Yeah, walk good. Okay, I'll make this more appropriate, let's take away. MCA doesn't affect the legs, so. You just do visual scanning.
That's what you're talking about, which is triad.
Which is triad is, is ICP. We talk about ICP symptoms, like hemorrhagic symptoms over here. Like, if we could put our specific symptoms, like these are for ischemic and hemorrhagic. And then if we talk about, like, just hemorrhagic only. They got headache, right, they got Cushing's triad. That's just ICP. It's elevated, and if it's an aneurysm, it's a thunderclap headache. Okay, that's a sign of, of hemorrhagic strokes. And we talked, you talk a lot more about ICP and MedSage three, but you have to recognize that hemorrhagic strokes, they can, they have all these symptoms, they got a really bad headache. That's, that's not good, right? The drain and such, and craniectomy, that's, those are, yeah, those are fixes for, for it. So triple H, bring down ICP, we might do a craniectomy. Put a drain in. Good, so triple H, and then, like surgical is clipping. Or coiling, coiling is more common, because it's less invasive. Hypertension. Okay? Alright, so it's two o'clock right now, do you want to take a break, or are you done? Alright, let's take a break. Pause this, remind me to record it when I come back. Alright, so we did stroke for the most part, I think we finished stroke, so, uh, let's, and we can do study guide on that, you still want to do study guide stuff, or do you want to try to think of questions, or just, what do you want to do?
If we were to do something other than a study guide, I'd like to be like.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, but if that's like too much, but.
Well, the good thing is, if, once you create the study guide, you can create chat GPT off of it. So you can, and also you can create it from the, um, the video, you can have it. The YouTube video, you can create a, uh, from the transcript, you can create questions too. Alright, so let's see where I have the other piece at. Alright, so this is what we had going on with neuro and such. This study guy is really just that last content, I don't think we're missing anything, right, we're just missing kidneys and, and of life.
No, too much, it's too add most of the, like, specific treatments, but I don't know if we need to go further than what we went into, like, do, like, do we even know exact sabbas, lamas, or?
Or the, you need to recognize them, yes, that, that, that's a saba or llama and such. So like with respiratory was next on our list, so let's go to respiratory here. Alright, so asthma, so what are the sabbas and labas?
Sabbas are, you know, laba, you're all.
Right, and labas are.
The, the fat rolls, that's, that sends something, send error, yes.
Some better home, and so, those are the examples, and then what are the side effects?
The sabbas, or I guess maybe both, you get the reference of complications.
It's both, yeah, because these are beta agonists, right? So, yeah, so you get SNS symptoms. Okay? And then, you know, tremors, et cetera. Okay, so that, that, those are also related to SNS. Right, so they get like tachycardias, putting parentheses. Tachycardia, tachypnea. Tremors, et cetera. Alright, what about the, um, sabbas and lamas?
One of our guests is the leukotriene, right?
Mm hmm. So, yeah, so we have other, um, other agents. I was just putting a dentator. Is where you have steroids, right, and then you have the leukotriene and other ones.
Oh, yeah. Um, um. Yeah, hypertrophy and geotropia.
Good. Right, so saba was.
Uh, hypertrophy.
And llama was? Geotropium, and what are the side effects? So these are what, what are the, what are these, the muscarinic what? Are they anti, what? These are anti. Colonergics, good. So you can't see, can't spit, can't, so it's the same things, right, so they're anticholinergics. Right, can't see because they are dry eyes, right, so they can't spit. Dry mouth. Et cetera, right? So that's the, the side effects of those, and then the interventions with these are, what, how do you administer them, right, so it's kind of like nursing considerations. Right, so this is a PFT, not PFT, PFM. Versus a, um, MDI use, right, is an important thing to consider. Right, so which ones, which ones which, so let's just do PFM first. So how do you use a PFM? Stand up. Blow or suck? Blow, right, this one is stand up, suck, right? So what else, what are some other tips and tricks for PFMs? Same time each day, right? What else? Three times. Good question.
I, I think I have bad.
Average, first, last, middle, or best.
Uh, what, are you like wanting us to find the answer?
Yeah, which one is it?
It's, I think it's the average.
That's a good test question.
Okay, well, I couldn't give stranger the best.
Okay.
Because she was like, I'm not gonna ask them to take the average or something.
She was like, what if they're not having the average?
Alright, so that's the, any other tips and tricks for PFMs?
So like the red, you have a green left, it's the red, nothing with all the back.
Mm hmm. Alright, red equals nine oh one, right, so red is what? Less than fifty percent, right, that's really the concern, right? Yellow is, means, take your bronchodilator, right? It's, it's based on their symptoms too, so if they've been up all night, and they, they, you know, really short of breath, or coughing, and they're, they're not getting any better at all, yes, they should. Right, but if like they were, maybe like eighty percent, and now they're seventy percent, and they take the bronchodilator, the next day they're sixty percent, that's not getting better. Okay? Right? Alright, so what, what are MDIs?
Uh, I know that, like, I've heard the term on butyral MDI, but honestly, I'm not.
Yeah, so we have abuterol up here, right? Right, abuterol, and it's given via MDI.
So is that, uh, just like for rescue?
Yes, so it's a rescue drug, so it's a, it's a rescuer. So we talk about MDIs, like, we're gonna put that at, that these, these medications, bronchodilators, they're usually given as our treatment. Or you have, you have controllers and relievers and rescuers, right?
Yeah, so like, you're asking, like, how, how the best way to take on butyral, is that what you're asking?
I'm just talking about MDIs.
For as long as possible.
So suck and hold, so just like, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, it's like. Don't use it frequently, only if it's needed.
Has to be, okay?
Why is that funny?
Exhale completely. It's okay, it's burnt, then hold your breath, and then repeat, and put in the next.
Stand up, take the cap off of it, you shake it, right? Shake it, not booty, right, and what else?
Exhale.
Exhale. Suppress and suck. Hold for how long? Ten. Okay, ten seconds, and then what, what if there's two doses? So you don't hold for a minute, right? Until your ninety year old grandpa has, okay, one more minute. You got this. For your own good. Two doses, wait one minute, and what about, it's, what if it's an ICS?
Uh, you wanna clean out your mouth, at least. You have corticosteroids, right?
Okay, any other tips and tricks?
Spacer.
Mm hmm. Can use a spacer, okay? Alright, any other things, so PFM versus MDI use, avoid triggers, when to call nine oh one, the other things for respiratory? Steroids is where we have our ICS and OCS, right, OCS is oral meds, oral steroids, right, it's for severe asthma. And that's side effects, we get Cushing's, not Cushing's triad, but Cushing's syndrome.
Oral steroids are like.
No, that's, no, no, eyes, as far as the PO steroids or the inhaler corticosteroids. PO steroids hopefully can be short term, right, but usually this is NCAJASBAN, they're gonna be on it. The side effects for ICS are. Canada Thresh, right? Okay, and then, uh, what about ICS, these are usually controller agents, control.
The tests are, when you ask a question about the syndrome, or just describe the syndrome, do you have to figure out what it is, or are you gonna tell us?
Yeah, so it's a side effect you expect from it. Mm hmm.
Skin are large out.
Mm hmm, stretch marks, thin legs. Cruising, et cetera. Alright, so then, anything else with these guys, bronchodilators, rest of the stress failure symptoms, we never talk about causes, but. Alright, so this is triggers, see below. Okay, and it can be do exercise induced. Cold weather induced, et cetera. That was down here, as far as the interventions. So it's triggers, but it's, it's a reactive airway disease. Right, so it's causing a, um, it's an immune response, a heightened immune response. Okay? Triggers. There are other reasons, like if you have like immune diseases already, autoimmune diseases especially, but you're high risk for asthma. Okay, GERD, you'll talk about GERD next semester, alright, so yeah, that's the kind of causes there. Alright, anything else in asthma? Do you want to cover COPD, are you good?
So like the.
Oh, oh. From kinds, so emphysema has like respiratory acidosis, but how about bronchitis, is it how like the, maybe G now, of the O two?
Assesisallosis.
Ask.
I'm here, ass, ass, ass.
Okay.
Why, because they're hypoxic, they're breathing fast, right, so they're gonna be alcoholic. Now, if they get to the point where they're severely hypoxic, yes, you could get respiratory acidosis, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a spectrum, right, it's not always this, okay?
Complications, you can have spontaneous, you know.
So, yeah, so chronic bronchitis, and then let's put down emphysema complications, emphysema. Okay, so you talked about corponmonaly is one, and then what else? Good, spontaneous pneumothorax. Okay? Nine oh two, okay, alright, spontaneous pneumothorax, and then chronic bronchitis, polyseptemia, any other complications? That's, they can't, yeah.
Explain attention, you're going to be completely understand that.
So this, that will be message three, you talk about like acute complications, pneumothoraces. That's just a worst case scenario, where the air gets trapped and trapped and more trapped, and starts pushing and tensing on all the heart must harden such, so the heart can't eject blood. So you get a low blood pressure with that one. Alright, spontaneous pneumothorax, corponmonaly, and then got pulmonary hypertension too. That's me, that's, that's which one, pulmonary hypertension? That's, I mislabeled this one, the B under, under this one, because this one has chronic hypoxia. Okay? So what is corponmonaly?
The, just I think the. Are you, what are they going to try to do with it?
Well, no, that was also not right. Corponmonaly is, is right heart failure. Right?
Oh, I thought corponmonaly caused right heart failure.
No, corponmonaly is right heart failure due to the lungs. Not due to the left heart failing, right? Corponmonaly is right heart failure. So to recap, right heart failure.
Right heart failure, you have edema, JVD, uh. I don't know, regally.
You, you started with edema, so we're going head, we're going toes to head now.
So you have abdominal discomfort.
Mm hmm.
Kid needs are failing.
You didn't start, you are failing.
Abdominal splintomegaly with possible absides and cirrhosis. Okay? Cardio megaly.
Well, it's, our, the heart's already big, alright, so patouslumegaly, also they get like a lot of nausea vomiting, because the whole GI tract is, is full of edema. And then past the heart is. JVD, right, so those are signs of corponmonaly, right? Alright, so then, and the treatment, we can treat pulmonary hypertension, like, like, listodonaphil. It's one of the things, bo sentin, et cetera, those are medications to fix the pulmonary hypertension. Alright, because that's the underlying problem, so right heart failure is due to lung disorders, or it's due to. Alright, because that's the underlying problem. So right heart failure is due to lung disorders, or it's due to left heart failure. If it's due to lung disorders, it's called corponal. Alright, so then complications, CP exacerbation, how do you fix a COPD exacerbation? These guys are usually getting bronchodilators. It's just like with asthma exacerbation. Again, I don't think we did that, though. Bronchodilate bronchodilators. And you're giving steroids, right? IV steroids. And then you're gonna be, yeah, you're doing positive pressure ventilation, like BiPAP. They may be maybe to be intubated. Let's go finish that up with asthma exacerbation. I don't think we did asthma exacerbation. And to let me, we didn't do complications. There's only one complication, which is nice, right? Asthma exacerbation. They're trying to combine them. Yeah, because it's it's confusing, like, do they have status or exacerbation? It's like it's the same thing. They're they're in the hospital, right? So, yeah, so they have, it's a it's a asthma exacerbation, where that it's some kind of trigger or infection, right? So their PFM was less than fifty percent, right? Or they're, you know, they're, what's it? What else? We're trying to say they have a infection, right? They have a respiratory infection, right? Especially respiratory. What's my risk for this? Do I need to go to the hospital, right? And then how do we how do we know the what are their symptoms? It's just worse asthma symptoms, but definitely AMU, right? Respiratory distress. And then also you can say when they start saying like, I'm tired, that's a really bad sign. That's a really severe hypoxia. So, so it's but severe hypoxia. Right, respiratory distress, so that they can now been blue, they can be, you know, I'm tired, the respiratory rate goes, starts going down. That's a that's a red red flag. Also, if they start, if you can't hear any air entry into the lungs, that means their airways are completely shut, right? And what else are we gonna say about that? Also, the ABG. Shows what? Yeah, shows acidosis, as extreme, those are like red red flags, right? And then treatment, same thing, bronchodilators and steroids. Like a novel bronchodilator they've been using, or they use now, is magnesium. Magnesium relaxes everything. But we have high magnesium, your heart rate's low, and you have high magnesium, you stop labor, right? And when you have high magnesium, it also relaxes all split muscles, basic dilates, right, with pump with hypertension, and OB you learn about. But also, it's it's bronchodilates as well. So it's it's used in that capacity. Alright, so of course, they could need BiPAP and intubation too. Usually try to avoid intubation, because that's usually though, that's that's extremely serious, it's really hard to get them off. Same thing with COPD. Alright, so yeah, so what else on COPD? Kind of a CP exacerbation is the same thing. There's triggers, or there's it's usually more infections first, because COPD, if you give more of a I don't know. It happens more, it's it's like a growing thing. It's it's like a uphill battle, whereas asthma can happen right away, right? As with that special happening. And it's it's more reactive, because this is a better way to determine where it's chronic, it's COPD is more chronic over time. But they can get admitted to the hospital because of a an infection of some sorts. Okay, especially pneumonia. Okay, so what else? We didn't really talk about interventions for these guys, because you these guys want to stop smoking. Okay. What else on CP exacerbation? I think that's it, right? There's no other big things about it. Emphysema, they can get spontaneous pneumothoraces specifically. Okay. Those are fixed with chest tubes and, you know, you know, on X-ray. That's beside side symptoms. What do you what do you see with a spontaneous pneumothorax? It's sudden. Towards the breath, they might have some chest pain as well, and they might have a little hemoptysis thrown in there, but they're also gonna have what? An auspitation. Silent chest, right? Or it's I shouldn't say silent chest, that's usually says that the asthma, they have absence. Air injury, absence, lung sounds. Unaffected side. It's really bad, it's both sides. They probably didn't make it. Okay, so those are symptoms. Corponalali, talk about symptoms and treatment. The treatment of of new authorities, that is gonna be more bad search three, where you talk about putting chest tubes in, how to manage a chest tube, and what to look for, and how to get someone better on that. Right now, we're just gonna say they can, who gets new authorities? COPD, that's a complication. How you know your CBD patient that you're taking care of the next three semesters is getting worse, or it might have a new thorax, right? So then chronic bronchitis, I think we kind of talked about that a little bit. We were talking about the types up here, right? So split separate the symptoms of chronic bronchitis versus emphysema. So it's a pink puffer, right? CO2 is a basic dilator. So that means they are gonna be flushed in appearance. Blood is closer to the skin, so they're more red. Okay. And then what else? What else? A barrel chest. Alright, so that means as far as like interventions, what are we gonna do intervention wise? They're cecactic. So it's like do better. Yeah, if you be patients, yes.
Well, I mean.
Should I feed them? Yes. So interventions, high calorie foods, high calorie, and they have trouble breathing, so you're gonna you're gonna space it out, high calorie, small foods, right? I like I like small little like microfoods, but you know, small meal, you know, frequent meals, that's a better way. Small, frequent, high calorie meals, right? So the main carrot sticks, those aren't high calorie unless you dip them peanut butter or something. I don't know. Dip, I wouldn't dip them in cheese. You gotta you gotta weigh your pros and cons. Like, do you want to give them asthema sclerosis, or you want to get rid of the COPD?
Do a double T burger every now and then.
Or little sliders, alright? So cecactic barrel chest, flushed appearance, the other things about emphysema. They're probably purse lip breathing, because someone taught taught them that before. So that's something we can teach them, right? Teach if you're getting in trouble, do some purse lip breathing. What is that all about? Yeah, it's purse your lips and breathe. No, no, it's You're gonna exchange oxygen better. You're gonna maintain your, you're gonna open your, keep your airways open more. It does what BiPAP does. It keeps it keeps a positive pressure inside the chest. Because in emphysema, that distal bronchial is collapsing. We want to keep that bronchial open by keeping it open at all times, right? First lips and exhale through them, exhale slowly, okay? You're trying to keep that pressure in chest. Like, right now, if you take a deep breath in, and then breathe on that, that is what's that's positive pressure inside your chest, right? And that's what you're trying to maintain. To prevent exoslid, to prevent collapse. Of bronchioles. And emphysema. I mean, you can teach it to your chronic bronchitis patient, that's cute, but it's not gonna do anything, right? But smoking is gonna help both patients, right? Well, before we get to that, let's just finish the chronic bronchitis. They could be breathing faster, but these CO2 guys are breathing faster too, why? Because they have CO2, right? And that's and a stimulus for this, SNS is high CO2 and low oxygen, right? They'll be breathing fast. I mean, these these guys, the symptoms for these guys are gonna be coughing, no matter what, if they're emphysema or or the other one, right? You're probably gonna have wheezes as well, right? So it's kind of difficult to say, well, which one is is this asthma or COPD? It's like you kind of look someone that's fifty years old, sixty years old, that's probably not gonna be an asthmatic. That's probably, yes, you can have both, but that's probably someone with COPD. Who's fifty six years old, is a heavy smoker, it lives in Long Beach, or on the uranium mines of Rosamond, those are going to be the ones that are, you know, probably the COPD-er. Okay, coughing, wheezes, and hypoxic a little bit, let's just say, to not to confuse it, but these guys are coughing, coughing. Right, it's usually, it's usually says, like, if you have three months over in, like, per year, five times two years, then you pretty much have chronic bronchitis, coughing, coughing. These guys are known for their coughing, they're coughing all the times, all the time. It's like, why are you coughing? Are you sick? No, it's got it's got allergies. Okay. Alright, so these guys are extremely coughing, they got a lot of sputum. What else? Their larger size. Size, and they have a they have chronic hypoxia. So they have what kind of feature? They get cyanosis and clubbing, good. Right? So. Alright, so. So then, but they, you know, this can lead to pulmonary hypertension, right? So that's kind of why they'd be larger in size, they have a dependent edema, they got more fluid retention, all these things, right? That's a complication of chronic bronchitis. Any other symptoms for for these guys? Causes, similar, there's big one is smoking, right? And then it's air pollution. There can be triggers, like, you know, frequent as, you know, having been exposed to different other triggers like mesothelioma, right, that you see on three AM in the morning. Do you have, have you been exposed to mesothelioma? Alright, so that that can do it too. Okay, like like where they work and such. So let's just say, like paint factory or something. Mesothelioma, not like a paintball, but he's mesothelioma. Alright, so those are causes, and then like genetic. Sometimes the influx likes to test on these. I don't think I have a question on this, but that's the alpha one if that trips in. As a young person. This usually happens in old older, and if it takes like twenty years of smoking, it's gonna do it. Okay, so going back down here for interventions, how do you make someone not smoke? Cessation. Cessation, right, it's the five A's, right? Have they accepted, they have these process, so they need to need to quit smoking, right? We can throw nicotine patches their way, we give them counseling, all those things, right? Cessation, alright, don't smoke with what? With asthmatics, yeah. It's with the other thing we do for interventions.
I've kind of lost someone's lip.
Oxygen. Turn it off while you smoke. That's a good. That's a good distractor, actually. If you're gonna smoke, just turn it off. Alright, so so what's some oxygen tips and tricks?
Fifteen liters a day for it to be effective, or sorry, fifteen hours a day, yes. I would have known that on a test.
Right, so not overnight, right? Not just during the daytime, unless you're open, because you could be awake eighteen hours, but that's, alright, not overnight for sure. People don't usually sleep eighteen hours or fifteen hours.
Therapeutic treatment is like eighty eight to ninety two percent.
Good, so this is really, you know, for chronic bronchitis. Presses forward, sorry, for emphysema patients. Stats of eighty to ninety two percent, right? Or anything else COPD like?
Oh, I mean. Diet isn't, there's like all those like contributing factors to like helping with ASCVD, and like, does that kind of apply here too, like?
So ASCV does, ASCV does not cause COPD. They they are two different things, but COP does cause ASCVD because of all the inflammation. It's not like, I mean, I would kind of consider it as the complication, or you just think, I mean, smoking is a significant risk factor for ASCVD. So I think it's more the smoking than the COPD.
Nothing that I'm checking, but.
Okay, I think we finished neuro, did a good job of neuro. Mobility, we think we addressed that below. Alright, so back at our list here. Where did my stuff go to cover? Okay, so we finished neuro. More effects by diabetes. Butterfolds. Diabetes. Okay. And then. So types, you got the symptoms, you got and the types kind of gives you the causes, right, causes and types. Of diabetes. Symptoms, the treatment, if antidiabetics, you have insulin. And then as far as the complications. But interventions first, because there's a lot of complications. Our interventions for diabetes, and then complications, you have hypoglycemia. You have hyperglycemia. Right? And then you have, these are also hyperglycemia, that's DK and HGS, right? So as far as like four important facts, want to know about DK and HGS, because that's going to be related to ABGs, right? It's gonna be related to that's much infection, but it's sort of like hyperkalemia is gonna come again with 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 kidneys, so we should know about that. Okay, so as far as like the symptoms, or causes, the symptoms. Alright, diagnostic tests, and then treatment. What's the treatment? Alright, and then complications is is death, unfortunately. So there's not much more you can do about that. So symptoms is just gonna be the diabetes, right? DM plus DKKA, right? So what is DKKA? That's really, that's right, that is the D, that is the this one here, that's DM, DM symptoms, KKA. What are the what are the symptoms of that of DK?
It's like the hot dry thing?
That's hyperglycemia, which is diabetes, right? So that's your three Ps, right? So ketacium, right? That works too. Okay, IK, not least a what?
Nothing about.
The T tones, yeah. Ketones, right? So ketones will will be present, right? And they're also acidotic because of the because of the above, right?
Are we gonna have to recognize beta hydroxybutyrate or what?
I think I just made them acidotic. Okay, so they have their acid, that means their pH is what? Technically, it's three O, like, if you look at the the literature, it's three O technically. I'm not sure why they could just say three five, but yeah, they're acidotic, right? And what's the bicarb? Normal or or is it CO2? Good, this is a metabolic, so that's that's a good good point, let's put this here. Alright, pH less than seven three O, bicarb is what? Alright, so what else than A? They have like an acetone breath, that's kind of over here, like free breath. Okay, and the acidotic, they're they get like a belly pain. It's pretty nonspecific. What else I'm missing on that one? So your symptoms. Yeah, with this one, you you bring, you make, they're they're really, the potassium body wide is actually low, but the potassium is super high in the serum, because it's trying to fix the acidosis. But either way, diagnosis diagnosis tests, we're doing, you know, chemistries and anion gaps. What else on that one? Than twelve, yep. Alright, so causes, this is I's. Right, so that's the infection. Incompetence, or they're not taking their medication. Or insulin none, or they also say like, a baby can do it too, you know, infant is another one, they have I for MI's. Incredible stress is one too, being in the hospital. Alright, so hyperglycemia is just, that's just in the hospital setting, their sugar can be high, but does it get to the point of DK or HHS? It's it's, we don't know. I think that's why we assess for these things. So causes of HGS is what? That's a good point for here for BMP, sodium is and then over here BMP, sodium is actually high. Right, and then ABG, what's the ABG look like? Normal, pH is greater than seven three O. Alright, they don't have acidosis, if they have acidosis and hyperglycemia, that's always DK. Okay, but what are the causes of HHS?
I just know it's really high sugar, but I don't know like how, yeah, I don't know like how they get there. Oh, oh, it's, it's, it's only in type two. Well, but I'm trying to get there. Is it suddenly stopping?
So it's, it's when they have, they have, they have the same things, so same as DK. But no access to water. Right, so they're impaired, right? They have impaired mentation, mobility, et cetera. Right, so it's, it's, it's extreme dehydration. Because these guys have the three Ps, right, but they, they drink, but, but can't drink, right? But can drink water. If they didn't drink water, yeah, that could be severe, severe DK, but. With HHS, they have a no access to water. Right, so someone who's bed bound for a long time, who's bed bound for a long time. People, yes. Large people, that's, that's, that's a little obesist. So, and mobile is a, is a fireword that we use a lot today. Someone has Alzheimer's, someone has stroke, someone has MG, someone has GBS, someone has ALS, someone has MS. They all are at risk for HHS. Okay. So that's someone who'd be at high risk. That'd be a way to connect this with the current content. Yeah, and it's, it's overlapping, yeah. Alright, so hypoglycemia, what causes someone to get hypoglycemic? Too much insulin, right? Okay, so there's like, I have to give, okay, outside of hospital, outpatient. Outside of hospital. Mentioned exercising. Without checking. The computer's AV, I can't, they don't, they don't keep up with my typing. When I'm trying to. It's, yeah, it's frustrating though, like I'm trying to witness heparin, I don't know. Right? So insulin, no food, so too much is important when insulin, no food, what does no food mean? So that means fats, okay, what is that?
Are, are you eating like specifically their diet or what's causing?
Let's put it in the, in the hospital, separate hospital. Good, so they're NPO. That'd be important, right? So they're NPO and someone gave the insulin. Well, shoot, what have I gotta do? You could give D fifty, you give, as long as you have D five water infusing, that's, that's gonna be enough calories, right? May need, if it's, if they're like severely hypoglycemic. Many D fifty, right? Alright, and no food, right? Some of their NPO at midnight or something. Right, get too much insulin and weren't checking, et cetera. Alright, so then other interventions. For diabetes are like sick days, you mentioned exercise. Anything else for diabetes is like the insulin, like how to give. Antidiabetics, there's a lot there, but I'm not gonna, I don't think I've, I think there is an antidiabetic question. Okay, so then simply, because they don't really relate to, to renal as much, maybe metformin does, so. Okay, so. What about symptoms? We've kind of talked about that down, down there, so the complications are the symptoms. Of diabetes, which is your three Ps, right? And then usually present with, like, especially type one, they'll present with complicated, they'll present with DK.
Do we need to know like hypoglycemic people are altered and cold and blamby and all that?
Yeah, that'd be under the symptoms here, so that's the causes and there's more symptoms. Right, so they. They got focal neuro deficits. Like a stroke. Right? That's why you check it first, right? And they also have the, um, SNS response and. What else? They can get comatose. Usually the tachycardia happens first, but. Alright, so then hypoglycemia is just three Ps. Right, and usually it's just a sugar greater than one eighty. One fifty to one eighty, depends on the hospital. But they don't have the symptoms of HHS or DK, they're not, they're not that sick, but they are. Hypoglycemic, the danger is they, you know, the high sugars doesn't, doesn't help you heal, so. Which are your chronic complications, which we didn't get into. So you have acute complications and chronic complications. Alright. What else?
What else for chronic complications?
Or not just in general? Is that good? Do they feel, do you feel diabetes?
We need to know like the, um. What's it called? The peak onset duration for insulins for this?
Peak onset to rate, no.
Well, I mean, just for the purpose of this class.
So over here, sick days, yeah, we mentioned sick days, like when to call nine one one, right? What else? We talked about causes, because causes. Metabolic syndromes up there, we kept a separate type line type two. Type one, type one is your, um. Whereas type two is your metabolic syndrome. And that's gonna make, you know, it's gonna comes back into ASCVD, comes back in hypertension, so that means it's gonna come back on the final. Alright, so to define metabolic syndrome, what is it again?
Waste stays.
So what kind of waste?
Have your cholesterol.
What kind? So there's hypertension, right? Clash was there too, but it's, it's not a total clash, it's specifically like triglycerides and your, um, LDLs or HDLs, these LDLs. Right, and then what else? It's just five, right? What section are we, what section are we in? What's the sugar over three months called? An A one C, right, greater than what? Six five, right? Definitely five, five, there's pre-diabetes too, five, five to six five. I watched a standup comic saying, it's like, you have pre-diabetes, like, doesn't everybody have pre-diabetes? Alright, so yeah, so A one C is, is important, tells you that your diabetes is under control or not under control, right? We've been in our science diagnosis. Okay, so that's diabetes. And valve disease. What do you want to know about valve disease? The same thing, there's gonna be one of four questions, one of four valve questions. Right, so whether, you know, I tell you if they have a, um, if it's. A, where, where you hear it the best, B, when you hear it the best, and C, what can you hear it the best with? Right, such as like lifting the legs, like pre-load or after loads, right? Not, not the Bell or diaphragm, but no, like. Obviously, I'll say with, with the Bell stethoscope, where are you gonna hear it the best, right?
So like, I guess we should just go over that.
So you can look at a couple of what, different ways, you can separate it by valve, or we can separate it by what I just said, so. Let's say where, who, when, I don't know, so where, and then, yeah, when, and then, um. What, right? We'll make it. Right? Okay, so where heard, right? So where, so what are your, what are your options? We're, we're doing it this way, we're doing it from, from, from the location, not from the valve. We got RSB. LSB. But where's the RSB at specifically? So this is your which valve? Aortic, right? This can be regurgitation or stenosis, right? Right, what about LSB? That's pulmonic, and I didn't test you on pulmonic, right? So. Right, so that's mitral, right? And that's stenosis. Before regurg, get your MVP and then regurg, right? So, and then when, right? Like featured, I might throw in there too, but it's, that's something, basically you should be getting your valve by, by this point. If you know that you're hearing it best at the aortic area, it's either regurg or stenosis, it's, it's impossible for it to be mitral. Right, so you, so likely both options will be there, stenosis or regurg, so you gotta figure out which one is it, right? So when is systole or diastole, right? So if it's systole, let's define systole, that is when. Yeah, but. Patient, so, so sir, tell me when it's contraction, 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 contraction. I heard it during his, when he said contraction. Good. Okay. Is the patient gonna tell you that? Yeah, but what, what can you assess? Yeah, good, that's good, you want to be able to, you can think, oh, that's stenosis and that's closed and not open, that's good. Or but specifically, if you're gonna look at, you can actually see it nowadays, with the people by the fancy stethoscopes, you can see where S one, S two are. Right, you can even correlate with the EKG. Right, but S one, and is it before S one, after S one? Yeah. Okay, between S one and S two is systole, right? Which is the same thing as same before S one, right, sorry, sorry, before S two. Or after S one, you could, you could, you could word that however you want, okay? So then what is systolic, what is a systolic murmur? Regurg is systolic?
Sorry.
So if you know diastole is arms parts, right? That's just aortic regurg. And MS, multiple sclerosis. The other one's the other one. Okay, so it's aortic stenosis. And. Okay, so let's spell it out. Okay, so that's, those are your systole diastole, so that you should be able to get the answer at this point, I hear it best. At the aortic area and I hear it during, uh, during, between S one, S two. So what is that? That's a systolic murmur, because between S one, S two, and I hear best in the aortic area, right, so that is. And define this as, it's aortic area. Right, we can just find diastole, diastole is what, between what? Which is before. S one, after. S two, right? So that's, those are your, so that now we can give you more information, like maneuvers, right? We can do more things to it, to, to get, to get you the right answer, right, because there's, there's three exceptions, which is. Here's the exceptions right here.
Like, uh, you're talking about like raising the legs and stuff.
So the exceptions are, you know, more blood, more murmur. More squeeze, more murmur, would I say more worker, more murmur? Okay. And you can define what those are, like a raise of legs, if I have them squat, I have, do these things, we're gonna put them, you know, put more afterload or more preload. Okay, and the exceptions are aortic stenosis MVP. Right, but I'm not gonna just, just give you the maneuver, I'm gonna give you all, all three of them. Alright, I even may give you some like features, like which one has clinkies pulse, which one has a crescendo, decrescendo pattern, which one has an opening snap. Right, but those are, those are just cool features, right, but this should get you there. Just by knowing these two right here, or that should get you there. Okay? No way? Think so, yeah.
Aren't we gonna need to know like the complications of specific valve murmurs?
Not so much, now you have to know that it's related to CHF, that it's, you know, valve disease is, can lead to CHF and CHF can lead to valve disease. Right? Alright, so then EKGs was the last thing you guys wanted to talk about. Let's talk about the top here, since EKGs was first. Alright, so the same, uh, you can group it by type, right, so you have atrial or sinus. Atrial and ventricular, right, and ectopy. And then blocks. Oops. I'll talk more about AV blocks and messers too, but we want you to be able to recognize them right now, right, and they're like an offshoot of bradycardia. I'll talk more about bradycardia and messers too. Pacers, all kinds of other fun stuff, alright, so you have sinus rhythms, atrial rhythms, so again, I'm not gonna test you on sinus rhythms, because. It's like, oh, I could, just give you a free point, it's like, which one, what is this? That sinus rhythm, right? Which was normal sinus rhythm? Alright, so then atrial rhythms that we mentioned, that'd be your which ones? Afib, a flutter, right? And SVT, and that's, that technically is Afib RVR, a flutter RVR. And PSVT, right? And what are your ventricular rhythms? VT, and then there's monomorphic and there's VT poly, which is your torsades. Okay, and then what about the other ones? And V fib? V fib always has, has no pulse. Or always has no pulse, always is without a pulse. These are lethal rhythms, you should know. Those, those are the other ones.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that those two counted as ventricular rhythms, okay?
Well, yeah, well, if you don't have ventricular rhythm, that's essentially. If your ventricles aren't contracting, that's PEA. Okay? Because there's, there's something with atrial standstill, that is, or atrial not contracting, that's a junctional rhythm, which is messers too, which we talked about. Alright, but anyways, this, these are your, your ventricular rhythms, right? And VT, this is the one that can have a pulse. Have no pulse, right? That's the only tricky one, otherwise all these ones have no pulse, right? Let's put that in red, they have no pulse. Alright. So VTAC without a pulse. Okay, so knowing what to do with these ones. And of course, like in general, what is, what is something that looks symptomatic, right? And that means we have to consider, you know, the treatment for that, right? So. Let's just put, whoops. It's the types. Must have clicked a setting where I can't hold the down arrow to keep going. It's frustrating me. All right, either way, so we got like treat symptoms, symptoms are, you know, I got palpitations, that's it, right? Or I have a really, really bad rhythm. Let's say palpitations, if fast. Palpitations, right? But if. Serious, I guess, it's symptomatic, a better way to say it. Right? Really fast, really slow, I get poor cardiac output, right? Right, so causes we kind of touch on, but. The treatment, right? The treatment depends on whether it's fast, right? If it's fast. Let's be slow first, because slow is, it's one, one little thing, but fast depends, we can either shock it, or we can medication it, right? So the meds are what? Meds for fast rhythms? Yeah, okay, adenosine only for. Yes, VT, right? So, and then meds, ABCD, only FBP good, right? Only FBP bad. Or someone signs up for it. The people do sign up for this stuff sometimes. Okay, so yeah, shock, that's where you have sync or no sync. So, slow rhythms, how do you fix slower rhythms? The junction causes slower rhythms. Epi can be, can be given, but usually we give atropine first. Dopamine can be in there too, right? These are all. Yeah, these are all going to vasoconstrict, right? And they're also going to raise the heart rate. As we're like with carbodopa, levodopa, which breaks down dopamine, we don't have the epi or nor epi to vasoconstrict. So we may dilate, and they have orthostasis, right? All right, anything else on these causes is usually structural of some sort? I mean, there's always genetic can be, be a factor, but there's some structural problem. They had MI, they had a CHF, et cetera. Right, there can be lights being issued, what kind of lights? Well, it's high or low, because you have to, you have to separate that out into whether it's going to cause kind of down here, right? So like Afib, flutter, that's structural, but tachycardias, where can I put it at? Yeah, I probably put ectopy, cause is hypokalemia, it's a good one, and then as far as. I'm putting causes, I guess, it's lethal. Hs and Ts. Right, so lights, just separate it out. So you've got potassium. Right, low potassium is for ectopy. What's high potassium do? Low potassium ectopy, good. High potassium mag. And calcium is Brady, right? And then the other stuff's the other stuff, right? So high potassium is going to also, that can also cause a lethal PEA, ericthely, but low calcium. I'll put it together, actually, low potassium mag, calcium, split ectopy and torsades. What else am I missing? My mouse froze. What's going on? There it goes. Okay, so that's EKG using nutshell, right? Anything else we're missing? Causes, symptoms, treatments, diagnosis, is getting EKG, right? They might get echo as well to see if there's structural damage.
Do we need to know like about like dish toxicity and stuff?
Dish toxicity, not to be more measures two, I think. So measures two, we talk more, a lot more about bradycardias. And we already tested you on dish toxicity, didn't we? We already gave you. So. Yeah, you don't test you twice on the same thing unless it's serious, like a legal rhythm. So high K causes what? As well, what other feature? On the EKG? Ts. So Hs and Ts, you should be able to recognize, especially the ones we've talked about this semester, right? We talked about thromboses, right? What kind of thromboses? Technically, MI, but also. PE, good. What's another H? We talked about hyperkalemia. We talked about it with DK, and we talked about it with. Or sorry, we're talking about on Monday, CKD, right? I don't think we, kind of nothing else has really touched that. All right, what else is there? Hs and Ts, why? Is hypoglycemia? Hypoglycemia. And that is DM, right? And then, it's hyperglycemia, I don't think so, but hypoxia is definitely on there. And we have, what did you say? Is it tamponade? That's with what's disease process? Pericarditis, good. Okay? What other Hs and Ts have we covered? Hypoxia is respiratory. Not so much tension, but we talked about pneumothorax, though, or. What do they say that? It's not thorax, but it's kind of under hypoxia, right? Respiratory. Pneumothorax too. Yeah, there are Hs and Ts that we covered this semester. If we talk about high potassium also, we should know how to fix it, right? Because usually each one of these things, the whole purpose of Hs and Ts is these are reversible causes. You can't reverse, you could reverse someone's MI, that's down here too. You can't like reverse someone's CHF. It's like, get the CHF machine, right? So they're, they're, they're in PEA, right? Someone comes in, you know, we got our, we joked yesterday, but if someone comes with a magical fingers, oh, here I go, bring him in, right? Good, excellent. Hydrogen ion excess. Excess. And that's acidosis, right? Those are things that will kill you, right? So we're going to talk about U on Sunday, the uremia with renal failure. So how to fix that, and then, you know, ketones is your DK. Ingestion is not so much, that's more measures three, we talk about overdoses and such. But lactate, we'll talk about next semester, and measures two, but ketones and uremia for sure. So then, like, high potassium, we'll kind of talk about it with CKD, how to fix it, but it's the recap, we already talked about how to fix the high potassium in the ABG chapter, I think. So how do you fix a high potassium?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a big, it's a big. Yeah, it's. Abuterol. Beta blocker, beta agonist, actually. Insulin. Glucinate, or glucose. Or they put a gluconate, I think. No, the calcine glucose. The K is gone, because that's, that's key, that's why, that's Kx late, but. Beta is insulin, glucose there, so they kind of go together. But I think D is for dextrose, or D for, I think D is for dialysis, maybe. Dialysis, of course, that you can't like do that now, right? So what else? Right, it's calcine glucose. It's not insulin, it's gluconate. Oh, how to know? Calcine glucose, and then we have Kx label, we don't really need Kx anymore. It's not working, all right? So what else? That's EKGs, any other? Topics? About treatments, talk about lethal rhythms, tachryrhymas.
Do we need to know like, which rhythms, like we deep in, and which ones we synchronize, and like?
As far as sync versus unsync, not so much, but definitely know that you need to. Like what the treatment is for each one, for the lethal rhythms, for sure, like. I don't think I do sync versus non-sync, I think, but you do have to know, like, do I do compressions? Do I do epinephrine? Do I do, is this okay or not, right? Yeah, so yeah, mag for torsades, avoiding QT prolonging drugs. I don't think I really went into the QT prolonging drugs, but that's. Yeah, because, you know, like antiemetics, we've talked about antiemetics a couple of times. We'll talk a lot more about antiemetics next semester, because you're, you're be giving IV push antiemetics next semester. So you gotta know, oh, that could pull on my QT. All right, was this helpful, or was it more scary?
Because we jumped through a bunch of different topics instead of just staying on one. And then, it was a little pain on that, and moving on, we just kind of jumped everywhere. Okay, finally seeing color. And next, yeah, I think that was my problem on the last time. I was like, I. Thought I could like individually, you know, see everything, but then once I started combining everything, I was like.
This is the one I kind of do when I study, but I don't have you there to help me with that.
Yeah, well, you do have me there. You can always message me, if you, if you feel like, is this right or not right? Yeah, so that's the idea, is like, you, you make the connection, it's like, is that related or not? You can always ask me that, if that makes sense or not, right? And then, yeah, the same time you do want it, when you're studying this, you should be able to manifest this information. Like, we missed a few things, like we missed hydrogen ion excess. Are we going to miss it again? Probably not. Oh, yes, hydrogen ion excess is still there, right? But I mean, if we really studied, if you gave us five minutes, right, we could probably get all the Hs and Ts out. But the idea is to be able to recreate this stuff right then and there, right? And practice as much as possible, because the, the Hs and Ts are somewhere in the brain, right? It's like a jungle forest pathway to it, right? You want to make that, make that pathway much easier to get to every time. Right, so you can, someone asks you Hs and Ts, oh, here they are, and you go through them, right? And then same thing, we're like Guillain-Barre, it's, oh, yeah, Guillain-Barre, it's peripheral nervous system disease, it attacks this and this, and this happens, you become intubated for this many days, or you get to be able to. Extract that information. That's just step one. Step two is be able to interpret the information in front of you. Someone's coming in, and they're having, you know, or you get reports on someone Guillain-Barre, it's like, what's the priority? Priority is like, well, next thing you should ask is, what's their vital capacity, right? That's an important thing as a nurse to know, right? Should you know how to perform a vital capacity? No, that's the rest, the therapist can do that, or someone can do that. Same thing with like, you know, a lab test, like, do you know, do you need to know how to run the lab downstairs and figure out how to, how to spin it in the centrifuge machine? No, but once the result comes to you, you gotta be able to say, oh, they need blood, let's give them some blood products, right? Or they're, they're playing the couch low, that's, that's, and they're, they're getting aspirin, and they're getting this, and they're getting daft, and they're getting VT prophylaxis, I need to, that's going to call somebody. All right, that's the idea that as entry level nurses, that's what we, what I expect you to know, and what the program expects you to know, and the INCLAX expects you to know, to recognize, right? You know, just reiterate that, you know, I, I kind of know what you should know, because I also teach ICU nurses. I teach 16 week ICU critical care courses, I know exactly what an ICU nurse should know, and in my teaching ICU nurses, I tell them, I'm not going to teach you what I taught my ADN nurses. Because that is what they should know, right? As, as a new, brand new nurse, right? And also, I've, I've done all the NP classes as well, so I'm not teaching you NP level, I'm not teaching you ICU level, I'm teaching exactly where you should be. Right, and I put a whole bunch of images up there, so you can have some kind of frame of reference as well. So you're not able to, so you're able to, you know, kind of have some kind of visual, otherwise it's a whole wall of words, right? This is a wall of words, but this is, you know, it's more fine tuned. And again, the, I could just show this to you in lecture for six hours, okay? We've got, you know, Hs and Ts, and that's, you know, hyperkalemia, but that's not going to stick, right? So that's why in, in lecture, we're going to give you the why behind each one of these. Like, why is this one causes? Why does that one have that happen? Because we have six hours, you're mine for six hours anyways, but, no, I'm just kidding. So you have, it's, it's a way to, to remember the information, and to recall the information. Because that's what I do, like, I don't have the address and target memorized, but I can get there, I can get, I can get the information. I can go to the street a little bit, if I've only been there once before, it can take me a while, like, if I have like a relative in LA. And I was like, I have to know how to get to their house, like, you know, my, my grandma drove me once, but now, now I'm driving, I could maybe get there, right? But if I memorize their, where they're at, it's not going to get me there, right? I have to be able to get the pathway there. And if I go there multiple times, it's very, very easy, oh, yeah, take the four or five down, you go across the 110, go south here, you take the exit right there, there's a little big building, and you're going to get there. Right, that's the idea. So you have to practice it as much as possible in a study group, or if you write down a piece of papers, like, okay, go, neuro diseases. And run, and write them out, and you're like, go valve disease, you go, you write them out. Right, you write out diabetes, like, it took us to do diabetes like 10, 15 minutes, right? Yeah, you should be able to recreate this information as much, as much as possible, right? And that's, there's also spaced repetition as well, right? So don't study neuro again on the, on Thursday night, right, before the final, right, in six days, whatever it is, right? So that's, that's not going to do you good. So you have to do neuro, well, if it's the new content, because there's like 40 questions or whatever on neuro. So you want to be able to, you know, maybe every day even, do a little bit. Like, I'm doing a stroke today, I'm doing the other, other four the other day, and a stroke, then the other four, stroke, other four.
Regular there now.
No, I was regular at Panera too, when I was in third school. Someone's going to mix that up one day, put the charge in the hot charge. Lemonade, yeah, don't treat too much, too much tachyry, the medication, caffeine. Mm-hmm, so your questions on what? And everything? Where do I have ChatGPT at? That's not it. Too many windows open. That's the hippocampus, by the way. You download that. So who affects the hippocampus? Yes, I guess we're not there. Yes, I'm here. All right, hippocampus. Okay, there we go. All right, so create what? 10 INCLAX questions, INCLAX style questions. You want them SATs or not? On the following content. Make it SATA. Make it, select a reply. Where more than one answer. Is correct, the others should be distractions. Make them case studies with labs and HPI, and a list of medications. Make it spicy. Thank you. I was told to stop being polite to ChatGPT.
Notice any improvement in like the previous version of ChatGPT?
Well, the images are really nice. And it can also, like this consensus over here is, is the latest up to date information and evidence base. So I can, I can pull it to, to give me the best, most up to date information on something. All right, while that's cooking, let's look down here. I'll tell it to give the answers afterwards. All right, 58 year old with type 2 diabetes. ER with confusion, palpitations, and weakness, right? So that sounds like hyperkalemia, and it is. Based on his hyperkalemia, which treatments should be given? So Kx late sounds good if you're still living in 2015. So what else? IV insulin, dextrose, abuterol, it's continuing generating. Still there? I'm still here. So abuterol, insulin, and dextrose. Does that sound good? Yep, nebulizing abuterol. What about nebulizing atenolol? No, atenolol is a what? Beta blocker. It's a beta not agonist. Oral potassium. No, calcium gluconate. So A, B, C, and E are correct, right? All right, patient with CKD on hemodialysis. We'll talk about CKD and hemodialysis, but we know they have hyperkalemia as a side effect. As a complication, which conditions are contributing to this EKG finding of peak T waves? It's hyperkalemia. I mean, you could argue metabolic acidosis, because hyperkalemia causes it, but no, that'd be giving too much information, or that'd be looking, putting too much information into question. All right, so I settled to make more than one correct. I'm not sure what it's doing. I take that into consideration. All right, patient with a recent history of MI is undergoing an EKG, what would indicate a complication of MI? ST elevation is not good. It's not really complication, that's a finding. Well, I find it's indicated complication, yeah, you could get A flutter, V tag definitely, sinus rhythm's not there. Torsades is usually like an electrical conduction problem, usually electrolyte issue. Correct. So correct answer being V tag, A flutter. And ST elevation is arguable, it'd probably change it to something else. All right, forty-five year old with type one diabetes has an A1C at nine point two percent, is that good? It's too high. She reports frequent hypoglycemia, what adjustments should be considered? And again, this is more like an NP or MD question, we're not, our job is not to increase or decrease doses or decide what the best medication is. Our job is to know all the medications and what they could be, right? Because after they've made the adjustment, then we have to then say, well, shoot, that's might be too, that might lead to hypoglycemia, we're gonna watch them more closely, or make sure they get food, or or make sure if they're gonna add a blood pressure medication, I know that blood pressure medication causes bradycardias, I'm gonna watch out for that. All right, so what's it say, increased insulin dosage, education on sick day management, adjust meal planning and timing, watch blood glucose more frequently? Well, I just said that, so that sounds right. Consider introducing metformin, so you do with, if they, we don't know what they're on right now. So this is probably a great question, we'd have to give more information, see what it's kind of asked. It's asking what adjustments should be made, but we don't know what medication she's on. All right, anyways, we'll skip that one. Patient AFib with Chad's FAST score, that is awesome, okay. I think I gave it the content I wanted it to write questions on, but this is just a scoring system you can do for AFib to see if someone is really bad, has a really bad AFib and needs anticoagulation or not, because you know that they need anticoagulation, right? And that's the ten A inhibitors you give, and you can actually quantify that. So if someone has a high score, they need to be on anticoagulation. What anticoagulation should be discussed? Warfarin is an older thing, but could be used. Use of direct oral anticoagulants, yes, DC anticoagulation, no. Bridging on low blood weight heparin, if they're getting warfarin, maybe, but continuous anticoagulation for four weeks post cardioversion. No, that doesn't make sense. So, yeah, so warfarin or DOAX, DOAX are the new thing that we, that we, not new, like the last fifteen years or so. That's not a great question for AFib, why would we ask you is, which medication would you expect with someone with AFib, right? Or like long stay, or three days AFib, let's say, and they're getting discharged, what would alert you to make sure they have what medication, right? Or they require education on what medication, for instance, so they have bleeding precautions with this ten A inhibitor. Patient has DK, what interventions are critical? LR is better, but it's, either one is fine, so you get fluids, NS and LR. So what's the mnemonic for? So fluid instant electrolytes, right? So we need to get fluids, is there insulin here? Long acting insulin, like glargine and indetamir? No, usually, there are fancy protocols out there that lets you do that, but no, usually it's gonna be what, kind of insulin? It's IV regular insulin, so it's intravenous insulin you're giving, so I for intravenous insulin also. All right, so fluids, insulin, and then electrolytes, right? So usually keep your K actually greater than five when someone has DK. And then continuous insulin infusion, so B or E, which one's correct? E is better, or that is more accurate. Bicarbonate therapy for pH less than seven point oh, technically, yes, you could do that, right? But that's, I don't think I'd introduce that to you, right? But if they're like severely superacidotic, he could start a bicarbonate infusion. All right, patient has a massive pulmonary embolism, and they're unstable, what are reversible causes to this? That's not a good question, that doesn't make sense. So it's like, if they had a thrombosis, what could you do? We haven't really talked about this, this is, when it leads to a shock state like this, where their blood pressure's low, we actually give thrombolytics, we give TPA. That's not a, that's not something we went over at all. But if this was just saying, what are the Hs and Ts, just ignore the first sentence, what are they? That's all of them, right? I don't see anything that's not on the list, right? We didn't mention hypovolemia when we talked on the study guide, that is gonna be, you'll talk about that more with MedSurg three. We talked about when someone is hemorrhaging blood, and someone is, is like severely severely, I guess we're talking about dehydration. But there's hypovolemic shock, that you'll talk more about in MedSurg three. But all of these are Hs and Ts, right? All right, patient has COPD exacerbation, is receiving treatment, what medications would they be?
Would do that maybe short term, but oral unless it's end game, then you might just keep them on oral clerocereoroids. You would use long acting, use the, use the
Yeah, so LAMAs are fine. This is a, I would be more, what's the word? I'd be more not concise, but more direct with the question, whether they're doing, this is a COPD exacerbation question. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask you, I wouldn't overlap regular COPD and COPD exacerbation meds. I would say, do you know, are these appropriate or not, like, throw in like calcium gluconate, so no, no, that would not be there. But yes, longstanding COPD patients are on LAMAs, and longstanding patients are on PO steroids. But I would not make you distinguish that between COPD exacerbation and regular COPD. I'd make sure you know that, you have a COPD exacerbation patient, what do you give? You're gonna give, you know, IV steroids, you're gonna give bronchodilators. And yes, antibiotics is a good point as well, you give, because usually infection is what's causing it, so we give antibiotics as well. That's kind of the prior, the priority, I'm not gonna make you distinguish, oh, should they be on their regular stuff or not regular stuff, right? Yeah, sabbas are always okay to give, sammas are not good for asthma on their own. All right, assess the patient with MG, which diagnostic tests are relevant? Relevant is a strong word, tensile lung test is not used anymore, but I would not ask you like, which test is antiquated, this is not a history class. Anti-acetylcholine receptor antibody. Someone, which diagnostic test, yeah, that's a good diagnostic test, acetylcholine receptor antibody, good. Point of function test, that's a yes, why is point of function test with yes? Not FEV, you don't need, you need a, which PFT do you need? Need vital capacity, and you can also get a NIF from that too. FEV one, FEC score is for asthma COPD. But it's all part of a PFT, right? And then CT scan of the chest. You, no, they can breathe under the CT, but a CT scan is not related, right? Does an infection, and does a CT scan see an infection, and can infection cause myasthenia? Yes, but that's, that's not gonna help us. Right, like, and actually, it would be, it would just be fine. And serum electrolytes, not really, there's nothing electrolyte related with myasthenia, right? We know we don't give magnesium, because magnesium, like we said before, relaxes smooth muscles and skeletal muscles, so that's not great to give, this one with myasthenia. Patient has Guillain-Barre, which symptoms are Guillain-Barre? So ACE any paralysis is a yes. A reflexia is no reflexes, that's a yes. Positive Babinski, so I would, again, on the test, I'm gonna tell you where their toes are, are they up pointing or down pointing, right? So Babinski, no one wants to prove Babinski wrong, even though he's been dead for a hundred years. But Babinski reflex is not a normal finding, you should not have a Babinski reflex. Usually when you say someone has a reflex, that's something they should have, right? You shouldn't say, they have a reflex they shouldn't have, that doesn't make any sense, right? So you say, it's like, I don't know, I'm thinking like, you have, you you have, you don't have cancer, it's like, why'd you bring up cancer, right? That's like, that's not something I should have, right? So, it's like, you don't, a negative Babinski is good, that doesn't make any sense. Like, you're not having cancer is good, right? It's like, but why do you bring that up? But Babinski means, is, when that is present, Babinski reflex is present, that your toes are flaring upwards, right? That's for ALS and GBS and such. And MS for that matter, right? So the, we didn't talk about ALS. By the way, we have, you know, that reflex is suppressed at all times, right? Because you have a spinal cord, the upper motor neuron that goes down and suppresses the Babinski, right? Now, if your spinal cord is broken down with ALS or MS, then, or with GBS, you don't, now that is free to do its thing. But the key thing with GBS is you also are A reflexic, you're not gonna have anything happen. Okay, let me draw that real quick, so let's draw this real quick here. Let's do a whiteboard to share. So Babinski reflux, this is where you have your toes are flaring up right here, right? That's supposed to be a leg, right? So then you have the spinal cord here, right? And the brain, that here's the pond, the medulla and such, I'm trying to do a front view. Anyways, you have the nerves that can come out here. Okay, you have little upper motor neurons, and you have lower motor neurons here that go down and make your toes do your thing, right? And then you have a sensory flux, you have a sensory nerve as well, that's, once you tickle the toes, right, you do, you go upward on the toes, right? And then you tickle it, and it goes, oh, I didn't follow the leg that well. That's a reflux, right? You tickle the toes, that happens, right? So let's do this, and this is called a Babinski. Babinski, sort of, all right? So this is a Babinski reflux, it should not be there, it should not, that should not happen, you're always inhibiting this Babinski reflux, that's always happening. So in ALS, for instance, right, where you have a, it changes to a highlighter. Highlighter, highlighter. Maybe that's a vanishing pen, I've done that before, it's like, where's my, where's my stuff going? All right, so it's, yeah, so this guy is getting destroyed like an ALS, right? Now Babinski's free to go, it's gonna do its thing, it's no longer inhibited, right? And MS, when you have a destruction, just one little area of destruction, right, along the spinal cord, now you can have Babinski. And GBS, all of it's gone, sensory and motor is gone, so not only the motor part, but just also the sensory as well, okay? Yeah, I don't think I, I think there's like one thing where I describe it, but it's a distractor, so.
But when the bad things happen, it's usually the thing that inhibits it.
They still have a reflex?
They're otherwise reflexic, like if you were to tap their knee, right? That's the only reflex they have.
Yes, because they're not supposed to have it as a normal person.
That's why babies, they have Babinski's, right? They have Babinski's for babies, because their spinal cord is not fully developed, right? So they can't, their signal doesn't make its way all the way down to inhibit that Babinski. All right, do you want to do ten more questions, or are you done? On what specifically? All right, patient has VF, petriculofibrillation, and, yeah, this is ACLS, we're not gonna do ACLS. And that's MedSurg three, right now, all you need to know is what the treatment is, right? So it's like, why do I give it to you in the first place? Because you need to know what it is, right? If someone has a VF, you need to give epi, right? You need to give, you need to start CPR, right? So as a MedSurg one student, if someone has, goes into VF, like, what do I do? I'm gonna need to start CPR, and everyone in the room is confused, right? There are binders and stuff for what to do, but, you know, we should be giving epinephrine, for instance. If your patient goes into Torsades, you should be able to understand that, oh, I should be giving magnesium, for instance. I should maybe, you know, think about what the underlying causes are. So for VF, you can give amiodarone, you can give lidocaine also, you give epinephrine, you wouldn't give atropine, atropine is for for bradycardias, adenosine is another good distractor. Adenosine is for PSVT, not to VT, or VF for that matter. And then mag sulfate is specifically for what, arrhythmia? Yeah, polymorphic or for SARS. All right, so patient has CHF and has a history of diabetes and a shorter breath, potassium's high, what should you give? They didn't really try harder. Sort of recap. So just not E, right? The same question, yeah. Patient has AFib, and they're getting rate controlled therapy, so rate controlled therapy is to control the rate, right? So those are which kind of medications? Which medications are for rate control? ABCD meds, not ABCD here, but ABCD meds, right? So A is your amiodarone, right? Amiodarone is there, and what about B is your beta blockers, right? Is the beta blocker there? Yes, mitoprolol is there, there's my man, babe, and then C is? Adjust which two medications? So only deltazam and rapamel, deltazam is there. And then D is? Digoxin, digoxin is there, is ribroxyban appropriate for AFib? It is, but not for rate control for AFib, right? So is it, are we asked about anticoagulants or control the rate? All right, COPD has COPD exacerbation, she's on teotropium and albuterol and fluticasone, salmeterol. So we're on a, what's salmeterol, is a? Laba, right, we're gonna laba, a saba, a, what's fluticasone? Corticosteroids, an ICS, it's an inhaled corticosteroid, right? And we're on, and teotropium is a? It's a Lama, right? Which additional treatments? Again, this would not be a question I would ask, this is more of a provider question, where they have to decide, what else can I give to them? I mean, yes, you could recommend things, but it'd be more like, what will be indicated for COPD exacerbation, it's like, all that apply, right? Not something like this. Systemic corticosteroids, yeah, we could add IV steroids, if someone's in COPD exacerbation. Antibiotics, yep, antibiotics should be given, O2 therapy? Well, sure, it doesn't say what kind of COPD they have, but that's fine. IV fluids is very nonspecific. And then nebulized ipratropium. Yes, that's a SAMA, right? So again, this question is not something I would ask, but this is, you should recognize, I would be more the realm of, your patient's on this medication, what's the side effect? Right, or your patient, or which one of these, the doctor says I'm gonna order a SAMA, which one of these is a SAMA? Right, or the patient's getting ICS, what are some treatment, or some teaching you would do for them? All right, we got a patient with a history of renal failure and metabolic acidosis. All right, so the pH is seven two eight and bicarb's eighteen, is that metabolic acidosis? It is, right, oh, I need a CO2, well, I'm not gonna give you mixed acidosis, so you're fine. Which conditions would be contributed to acidosis, SADA? So this is just what causes the metabolic acidosis? Well, what's the mnemonic? Kill you, right? So we got ketones, we got ketones on there? Yes, we have diabetic ketoacidosis, do we have I for injections? Yes, solithal toxicity is an ingestion, but I wouldn't, I'm not testing that just now, just yet. Lactic acidosis is there, and then uremia is one as well, okay? Which is chronic kidney disease where your BUN goes up, your uremia goes up. What about diarrhea, is diarrhea vomiting that causes acidosis? So, yeah, so that's, that's correct, right? So diarrhea is also on the list, so things that'll kill you, like IV wise, or intravenous wise, or I should say, systemically, or GI causes as well.
All the other ones would be high in IGF and E would be low in IGF, or?
Correct, yeah. Diarrhea is a normal, and I got metabolic acidosis. All right, so then, patient's admitted of sepsis and has AFib, RVR. Heart rate's one fifty-six, blood pressure's good, what should be given? So what do you give for fast heart rates? ABCD, if it's supraventricular, right? Not ventricular, I should say. All right, so then, what does that, what does that mean? So basically, ABCD, right, so we got A, we got any amiodarone on there? We do, what about B? We do. What about B, your beta blockers? We do. We got C is a beta blocker, metoprolol. And then was it, was it calcine block? It's non-DHP. They got deltazem on there. We got digoxin on there. Nope. But media electrocardiaversion? That's where it's considered, but not, but when would you consider cardioversion and not consider the medications? Low blood pressure. So blood pressure is the distinguishing factor there. What about rivaroxaban? That's an anticoagulant that you do give for AFib, but is that the immediate concern right now? No, right? It's also asking what, which, which should the nurse anticipate? For RVR, usually you give, it's after, usually like two days of consistent AFib, you would give it. But I would probably then probably give you the specifics, like what would you give for it to control the rate, right? That's a 10A inhibitor. Eliquis. Oh, you're right, Eliquis and, um, I just lost it, but yeah. Okay, 55 year old with type two diabetes and have micro albuminuria. Is that good? No, you should not be leaking albumin out of the, into the urine, right? And we'll talk about that on, on Monday as well. That's one way you can tell someone's kidney disease is getting worse when the albumin starts spilling out. Okay, what intervention should be done? Again, for, should be initiated? That's, again, that's more provider question. I ask or in flex style questions, I don't know. But this is, yeah, this is more like what's, you know, which medic, I would again ask you more about what are the side effects or what are the teachings? For these medications, not what's the best medication to be on? Or what's next medication that should be on? That's not really what we're looking at. But increased dietary protein intake? Okay, you could initiate ACE inhibitor therapy. That's, that is very important for, for kidney disease and, and for heart disease as well. Tight glycemic control, we didn't really get, I guess, they didn't really give us an A1C or anything. Right? But you know, if they, that's a sign that their kidney disease is getting worse and it could be because their diabetes is getting worse, but we're kind of adding to the question. Same to the BP management. We're really adding to the question. We have to have a blood pressure. And again, I would not ask you all five, this is like five different questions in one. I would ask you, what would your BP target be for diabetes? What would your, you know, what could you suspect if someone had kidney, kidney damage due to the diabetes? You could see micro albuminuria, right? Does that make sense? Regular monitor kidney function? Of course, we would monitor it. Patient has been, is being treated for Torsades. What intervention do for Torsades? So magnesium is good. The fibrillation is good. I'd probably specify it's unsynchronized cardioversion. Temporary pacing, that is for bradycardias. And we'll talk more about that next semester. Potassium? You don't usually give IV potassium in a code. You can. I've, I've done it before, but it's not, uh, yes, hypokalemia causes Torsades. But you know, we, we try to fix it afterwards. Isopretinol, isopretinol is also for bradycardias. So we got bradycardia, bradycardia. Potassium, that's, that's very, very debatable. I wouldn't, I usually give you things that are debatable. We don't, you can't push potassium because it causes acystole. But if someone's already dead, it doesn't matter. Right? You just give it. Like I, I had a code, I don't know if I shared it in lecture, but and because I was reading, I was studying about, you know, potassium and everything and I, I buy low potassium and how it can be given during a code. There's good outcomes with it. And we, so then during the code, I said, can we give potassium? And they're like, sure, let's do the, I had support of the, of the ICU doctor. And they said, okay, let's, let's give it. And then pharmacies, you could hear their butt puckering from across the, from downstairs. They ran upstairs, what are you guys doing? We're, we're giving IV potassium. It's like, they're already dead. So then we, we gave it and then they resuscitated, right? So that's, and because they had given Lasix at 540, based on potassium of 2.9 the day before. So they were, the whole purpose of the arrest was, it was a hypokalemic arrest. That was our Hs and Ts and reverse hypokalemia, we give potassium, right? So yeah, so we saved her life and she had a great outcome, so. Yeah. So it is something that you, if you, as far as reversible causes, it's something you can do. If they do get a pulse and you're like, you still want to give IV potassium? Usually they recommend us to give it like over 20 minutes or 30 minutes. You can give it faster if you need to. Otherwise potassium rules, potassium rules. All right. So in a patient with an MI, what lab tests are done? So this is a more message three thing where he's to tell you about MIs and how to fix an MI. And all the things about MI, like cabbages and going to cath lab and post cath lab step, that's all MedSurg 3. What we need to know is do, are they having symptoms of an MI? And do they need to go, and what are the complications? We're like, we're leaving a big blank spot there, right? But your opponents are important for that. CKMBs are kind of phased out. CBC not so much. Myoglobin's are, are yes, but that's, that's more MedSurg 3, so we can skip that one. All right, has asthma and there's status eczematous. And again, oxygen, albuterol, steroids, what additional things could be given? Again, I would, I would not ask you like what else would you prescribe? That's not something you need to know. But you should know that you, the nurse would expect what, right? I give you distractors so that she wouldn't pick the other, the, the other ones, right? So what else would they, would they, do they need? And, and this, they need BiPAP, they need, do they need albuterol? Yeah, they can get albuterol, but they're already getting albuterol. That's confusing. Uh, intubation and mechanic ventilation, you could, but when, when do they, when do you know they need this ventilator, be put on a ventilator?
When they fail like inhalants, right?
It could, but the, the key thing is there's, is when they start developing respiratory acidosis. All right. When the CO2 even goes above 40, that's when we know that they are in trouble and they need to proceed to get intubated. Okay, antibiotics, yeah, you give antibiotics is usually infection could cause our, cause an exacerbation. But magnesium is another caveat we can throw in there for asthma exacerbations.
But what if you're reading too much into the question to say antibiotics should be given because usually it's?
Yeah. And again, if this is a question I was writing, I would not, I would not ask you like what else can you order, right? That's, this is, our focus is more, do you recognize if someone's has asthma exacerbation? When, when is it a serious enough situation where they'd be intubated? When, or what would you, you know, what would you, what else would be needed? Or that was another way to say that, is what would you have? What, what else would you expect? And the other thing, other options would be clear distractors like amiodarone. It's like, no, I wouldn't do amiodarone, but magnesium. It's like, well, no, magnesium is Torsades, but also, well, magnesium is also for asthma. So that's, that's a good correlation, right? That magnesium is for Torsades, yes, but it's also for, um, for asthma exacerbation. I would give you clear distractor. Wouldn't it make you pick between, you know, very, very like things? Okay. All right. Is that good? All right. All right. So let me know if you have any questions by direct message or otherwise.